Good evening. It's 5:30 exactly. And I'm calling this work session to order on school improvement plans. Just a couple of little housekeeping items is Director Bettinger will be absent from the meeting this evening, and Dr. Jewel Harmon will be attending the meeting via Zoom. And now to start us off, I'd like to call on Interim Superintendent Vella to introduce and tell us what we're going to do.
Thank you, President Hamada. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to share with you our building. We have a few of our building leaders that are excited to be here to share some of the work that they've done for many years and continue to refine as it relates to our school improvement planning process and what they do for our kids on a daily basis. So to do that, I'm going to introduce Mr. Randy Heath, our interim chief of school operations and academic support to get us started.
All right. Good evening, President Hamada, Interim Superintendent Vella, members of the board, Ms. Santello. It's wonderful to have you all here tonight. We have a group of four executive directors of learning improvement that are here today that have been working with each of our building, school building principals on their school improvement plans. And so they are here to kind of present around the school improvement process and answer any questions that you might have around that process. So without further ado, I will call up Patty Drobny, one of our edlees.
I always have to adjust this. Good evening, President Hamada, Vice President Benno, Director Farah, Director Clark, Interim Superintendent Vella, and Ms. Santello. Last year, executive directors joined a group of three principals to present at a work session and talk about school improvement plans, more commonly known as SIPs. This year, it's our privilege to share details on how school improvement plans are kept alive throughout the year, the steps that the principals and building leadership teams take at mid-year to revisit, revise, and even celebrate growth. And today, we're joined by three elementary and secondary principals who will share specific details for them, for the work they do on their school specific SIPs. I'd like to welcome Director of Learning Improvement, Dr. Christine Avery, to start the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty. Good evening. We, all schools, do a school improvement plan, part of our state law, and it is done at the building level. It is a collaborative process that involves different stakeholder voices. It is annual. It has really three parts to it. It has a new SIP each fall, a mid-year evaluation of progress, and then an end-of-year report. For all of our schools, we use the OSPI-developed SIP template, and we, as edlees, use the OSPI-developed rubric for each of the three parts of that cyclical process that involves the Plan Do Study Act. And so as edlees, each step of that process using the rubric, we provide feedback, and there are revisions that occur to ensure that we have a high-quality SIP for each school. It's important to note that nine of our schools are either a Target III I-grant recipient or a comprehensive I-grant recipient, and that is due to the Elementary-Secondary Education Act. Part of that federal law is that each state uses a defined metric to monitor student progress. And so in Washington State, OSPI uses the Washington School Improvement Framework, which is often called WISIF. They have identified different metrics of student groups. Some are race and some are program, and they have established a threshold for student performance that they expect all of these groups to be performing. If you are a school that has three or more of those groups underperforming, that's when you're identified as a Target III I-grant school, and you fall under the OSPI department, the umbrella of the Office of System and School Improvement. That's who gives those funds, those additional I-grant funds, to those schools with the idea that those schools are going to need additional resources and support to close those equity gaps. And so if you are one of those nine schools in our district, you follow the same process I defined for you a moment ago, the same templates, but you submit it ultimately to OSPI for final approval. Edlees still use the OSPI-developed rubric in advance of the submission to OSPI so that we have our own internal quality control, but that is one additional step for nine of our schools. This year, using the OSPI-developed SIP template, we do SMART goals for all three of our required goals, but this year, they added an I and an E to the SMART acronym. Now it's called a SMARTY goal, and that, the I for inclusion and the E for equity. So you'll notice in our SIP goals that the equity groups that are expressing that gap in learning are identified in each goal so that each school stays very mindful and targeted on what groups of students are they aiming to close the equity gap. And in our district, at a local level, state law that we have three goals, all of our schools have one goal for math, one goal for English, and at the secondary level, our third goal is typically around graduation rates, and at the elementary level, it's around community and parent partnerships. Thank you. Next is Doris Johnson. Oh, we'll do questions at the end. Is that okay? Okay.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about measures on the SIP plans. And as you see here, each SIP goal has a measure tied directly to an activity. Every activity has to be measured, and since the measures call for both short-term and long-term data, we want to make sure that the measure is specific to each activity that is listed in the SIP plan. Most common, most commonly, we see long-term data points in the SMARTY goal that are tied to either I-ready or the SBA, Smarter Balanced Assessment. And what we also know, though, is that we need checkpoints along the way because the I-ready is taken three times a year. The SBA is a summative assessment taken one time a year. Therefore, principals often, as part of the SIP planning process, they develop assessments, formative assessments along the way so that the, so that what they're measuring is appropriately, appropriately matched to the activity. An example of this might include common grade-level assessments. It might include end-of-unit assessments so that each activity is successfully implemented and results in the achievement of the SMARTY goal. And next, I'd like to introduce our executive director, Jim Sheel.
All right. Thank you. When we think about those measures, what's really important to focus on, and this has been a key part of the work that the four of us done, the four of us have done with building leaders this year, is really thinking about what are those measures and how are we making sure that we're doing the right work in the right way all year long. It doesn't do us any good to wait until, as Ms. Johnson said, it doesn't do us any good to wait till an I-ready in 12 weeks or SBA at the end of the year. We need to be thinking about how are we monitoring our measures and our activities over the course of the year so that we're doing them with fidelity. And you'll hear a lot of that from our, from our principals. A lot of our schools are working on professional learning communities, for example. So when we think about measures, what's the, what's the evidence that you're gathering and your team, your team of teachers, your school improvement team, teachers, students, parents, administrators at your building are looking at to know, are you doing those PLCs? Are you doing them with fidelity? Are they, are they working? Our goal that we focus on is that if we can get to a point where we are working at about 50%, so 50% of, if we use the PLC example, 50% of your PLCs are functioning well, or 50% of implementation, that kind of starts getting you over the hump. The hardest work is to get to 50%. And once you've got an activity or an initiative at your building and you're at that 50% crest, you start making it over the hill, and, and the momentum builds, and it becomes ingrained in the work that your school is doing. It becomes routine. The important part of this routine is that this is a living document that we're working on all year long, not just something that you write in September and then check off and say, "We're done." We're constantly going back and having conversations about, "How is this working? What evidence do you have? What tweaks do you need to make?" So the most important part of today's presentation is to hear from three of our incredible building leaders about the work that they are doing specifically in their schools as examples of how this process works. So I am proud to introduce our first principal, Mr. Doug Newfeld.
Good evening. All right. So I'm here to talk about how we select our goals. So the first thing we do is we obviously want to increase achievement for all of our students, but we do tend to look and see which of our students need to make the most gains and which are underserved. And so we take a look at our data and select a couple of, maybe one or two groups that we really want to support their learning. Then we take a look at our data in, in detail, the different sources that Ms. Johnson was talking about, and look at that and then determine what is it that we think is happening here? What is the cause of maybe the reason that students aren't achieving at the levels that we want them to achieve? And so we try to figure out what that is, and then based on that, we come up with some strategies and select a couple of strategies, one or two strategies to so, to go with that particular goal. Up here on the screen right now, we have an example of what, what it looks like at Metta Ridge, my school. And then you can see that we tick those two activities, and those go right into our SIP plan. And then you can see that we have associated timeframes, people who are responsible, resources that we need to achieve those goals, and then the measures that, that we would do to see if we're making progress towards those goals. So right now, I'm going to hand this over to Ryan Price, who's the principal of Covington Elementary, and he's going to focus on the measures.
Good evening, everybody. As the next part of the cycle, as we are moving through the SIP process, what we're also looking to do is to make sure that once we've chosen an activity, that that activity then has measures that are directly tied to it. We are thinking about how we can make sure that there's a tight union between the activity and the actual measures that we are interested in. We might have a new system that needs to be put into place. We might need to have a new instructional practice that is put into place, depending upon what the goals are and the activities are. Sometimes it could be addressing a belief gap. And so as we think through how to make a strong marriage between those, what we are also looking at is, for example, if we had a, a new instructional walkthrough tool, would be a way for us to look at is something being implemented well as a specific example. Overall, we want there to be that tight union, as I mentioned. For example, at Covington Elementary, we have for one of our third SIP goals to assess teacher knowledge of English learner strategies. We have three specific measures for the one activity that is identified here in the SIP plan. Two of the three measures, we developed on our own. For example, Measure Two and Measure, excuse me, I should say Measure Three, where we have a survey that was created because that gives us both pre and post data, so beginning of year and end of year, as we can see growth. Measure Two gives us something that can be looked at more often, more frequently, weekly, gives us a point to check in. And then One actually is already in place in that it's part of our SELF-IBD rubric through our regular evaluation process, and that gives us a little bit more opportunity for benchmarks, something that's seen a little bit more often. Taken all together, those, those benchmarks, more frequency, pre and post, gives us a more comprehensive view as how is that particular activity being measured over time to let us know if we have adequate implementation and how successful it is. And all of those combined, of course, pushing us towards success. As part of the next cycle, I'm going to introduce our next principal, Mr. Mike Albrecht, principal at Kentridge.
Good evening. Part of the school improvement plan is what Mr. Sheel referred to a little earlier, is that once you have identified a strategy, you then want to be able to monitor its effectiveness. And so that when you're starting off on that strategy, you're looking at the fidelity of implementation at 50%, and you want to start seeing some results from there. And then once you have 80% fidelity, you really should be able to make a determination of whether that strategy or activity is successful, and you're seeing the results that you want to see that are associated to that activity. At Kentridge High School, we have a goal to have all students graduate at 95% in the four-year cohort. And with that, then, we have looked at a lot of ways to recover credits, is that credits is one of the key components for graduation, along with the high school beyond plan and creating career pathways. At Kentridge, we've done some really intensive work, as well as all the other high schools have too, around getting students their credits, and especially those who are behind. So in our social-emotional courses, our Edge Annuity program, which we do before and after school, online classes. Spring school is an intensive effort to make sure that every senior is at those 24 credits and can graduate. We have an academic interventionist who is monitoring ninth and 10th grade students, making sure that they have their credits and looking for different ways to help assist them to get their credits. For example, in fact, next week, we will do a credit recovery program for those kids who are really just that close to passing a first semester. Then this year, we have a success coach, and the success coach, one of their roles is to make sure that 11th and 12th graders are on track to graduate, especially those seniors. One of the key components that we had with this was the Keystone Program. The Keystone Program was developed in response to remote learning in that we identified 80 ninth-grade students that despite our efforts of check and connect and home visits, they just did not connect during remote learning and therefore came to us with zero credits. And so we looked at those 80 kids and said, "What, what do we need to do with them?" And what we identified was, is that if we could pick three teachers, and that would then be their homeroom teachers. And so every day, they meet with those teachers, and then a core of core teachers that would have the exact same kids. So we have this intensive group of teachers that are helping these kids, as well as wraparound services with our gear-up coordinator, with community and schools, a dedicated counselor, we have parent outreach. So it's a really intensive program to assist these 80 kids to gain some credits. And so when we implemented that, we began to look at the data right away. And then, when we got to the 80% implementation with fidelity, we are seeing some fantastic results. This is quarter one results right now, and we can see that these kids who didn't pass any courses and were disconnected based from learning for a year, we got them passing core classes, and you can see how many there are, and we're getting kids to pass a number of classes as well. This is quarter one. Semester data was just put in here this last Sunday, and so I do have some new data. For example, we have 20 students who are passing all of their classes. Again, we want 80 kids to do it, but when we're looking at the implementation of this strategy, we're getting there. We have 19 who are passing four, four or five more, and we have over 60% of our kids passing all their core classes. So when we look at the implementation, and we think we're at that 8% fidelity, we're looking at the positive results, which is exactly what you want to see in your school improvement plan and in the strategies you're choosing. At this point, we will open it up for questions.
Before I forget, when we're on this, which is very interesting to me, just these programs at work, 20 kids are now on target with this program. When did you start implementing? This year, are you saying?
No, we started, we started the planning process last spring.
Okay.
And over the course of the summer, we had a couple pullouts with the teachers, and then that program started with the kids, first phase.
Okay. And did you ever find out why these 80 kids never connected?
Yeah, you know, one of the things we did at Kentridge is that every week, we had a team of people that called every ninth-grade student.
Okay.
So, and trying to connect with them and connect with them. Many of the hard problems was that sometimes we just couldn't connect with them. And so that was home visits. Quite frankly, these were kids who probably struggled in sixth, seventh grade, fifth grade, and then when remote learning came, there wasn't that adult. I think the biggest thing we've learned at the high school level, and assuming it would be to say in other other levels, is the importance of the teacher. And the teacher creating those relationships in that class to keep those kids on track. And that's what this program was all about, was to try to find three teachers that could, that I-chosen teachers, and kind of all involved in congratulations to give to you as part of the program. Yes, is that because they have, in our building, they're recognizing the people that could really develop relationships with students.
Yeah.
President Hamada, if I can, really quick, if we can have our team come to the, just so that we have it on the microphone, just, that'd be great.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
Was there another question for Mr. Albrecht?
Yeah. Falling up on that, Mr. Albrecht.
Yes.
How did you get those 80 kids to even get back into the school system then? By continually calling and just dogging them till you got all the...
Yeah. We did, at the beginning of the school year, we, that first week of, before school started, we did some intensive calling. We sent letters to the parents. Quite frankly, we scheduled them into that program. I mean, it was an opt-out. Nobody opted out. And what we have found is, is that kids wanted to come back and see their friends and come back to school. And so they were glad to come back, and then it was trying to teach them how to do school again and how to be successful.
So you've been at this for a semester, right? Just completed one, two quarters and a semester. I'm curious, because one of the things that I try to do with the kids I know is build relationships. Do you feel the kids are happy in school or happier emotionally? Do they feel with the, the three key teachers and the core people they're working with that not only are they getting that intensive help, but they feel better about themselves and their environment? I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, that's a good question. One of the things that this program does is that every Friday afternoon, they do a total program celebration. So the kids identified as Keystone Kids. They got a water bottle at the beginning of the year and a lanyard and all those things, trying to really get them to connect to the school. And then every Friday, they do celebrations. And it's a highlight of my week because I go in and watch, and they recognize students of the week. They recognize those kids who are improving. They also get student voice, what do we need to do better, and what kind of things are happening, and what drama, right, with kids do we need to assist in, in solving within the program? And it's fantastic. And then we also do a lot of restorative work with discipline in that program, too. So yes, they are connecting.
Thank you. I'm going to let other people, I'm just going to keep talking here. I have lots of questions, but I'll shut up.
Well, I have lots of questions, too. Anybody want to shorten the examination?
I have a quick question, if you...
Go ahead, Tim.
Okay. Well, all right, Mike, I'll, I'll start with you. So the, I used to teach at Kentridge, just so everybody knows.
That's why he called me Mike, by the way.
Right. All right. So, spring school?
Yeah. More intense. Yeah. What, what that really kind of means is it's a label for our kids, especially our seniors, to go, "Look, we've given you chances to get caught up on all your credits, et cetera. So now what I've done is, is that we've created a team of people that are going to be our online teachers, and that, then we use lap dollars and other, other monies to pay those group of people. We identify these kids going after school, you are now get to be a part of spring school. You are so lucky that you get to spend more time at Kentridge as a senior to make sure that you get to those 24 credits." So that's what we call spring school for those kids. If we don't, and thankfully we have been, is that our senior numbers are fairly low to be able to catch those kids up, and so we can also identify some juniors and sophomores to do that, too. We find that that's more productive than some of the summer school programs that we've done.
All right. So the intensity of Keystone also means that your, that has an impact on staff in terms of staffing overall.
Yep.
Is there ESER money involved in this?
Yep.
Okay. And Edge Annuity, that one caught me.
That's our online program. That's our online courses that we use.
Okay.
So it's the title of the talk, the company with the online courses.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Drobny. The, so the OSPI goals were out there, and among them was the elementary goal, and it included parent and, and community partnerships. So, missing the point here... So missing the point here, obviously each building has a particular makeup. And that then is going to narrow the field of what's available in those community partnerships. I'm just curious how you sort that.
Well, actually, we work with district office and then the community-based organizations. And so it's, it's, every school, you're right, is it looks different and they call on who is available, who's in the area and who really meets the students' needs for those particular students. So for example, we have at River Ridge, oh gosh, I'm drawing a blank, Kent Youth and Family Services. We have a person who is there three days a week and the kids actually will request to go to that person. Pat Friedel is his name, if you've ever met him, pretty awesome guy. So it's, but it comes back to what are the schools' needs, what are their demographics and who can they reach out to? It might be the Center for Asian Indian Relations. We try to really think out of the box on how best to meet the needs of all of our students. And we're pretty fortunate in Kent that we have a lot of community-based organizations that really want to support our schools.
Thank you. Principal Newfield. Now, I live right by your building, so I'm acquainted with the fact that you have a fairly unique student body. And what percentage of them are multifamily-based?
Multifamily-based, what do you mean by that? I'm not quite understand.
Multifamily housing.
Multifamily housing?
Apartments.
I would say it's probably the majority of our students. I don't have an exact number.
Okay, and that, that by its very nature is going to bring its own unique challenges. Now, in my observation is you have significant groups of different ethnic groups. But if I were to lay a bottom line on much of this, I would say that it's a high poverty environment.
Correct, yes.
So what kind of community involvement are you specifically trying to bring in for what particular group?
Sure. So the community partner that we've worked with most closely the last few years has been the Coalition for the Refugees of Burma. And they come in and do an after-school, they've done, within the day, after-school programming with us. It changes based on what our need is. They did kind of back off during the pandemic, but they're re-engaging with us again a little bit. And also, one other thing is we try to involve our parents. We've had a, we used to have a coffee with the principal before the pandemic. Now we're doing online meetings with our families to get them involved. We've had, I would say, a little bit of a struggle with our PTA, getting our PTA going. So currently, we're trying to work in re-establishing that maybe under another, another title, but getting some parents. I've identified one of our mothers who's great, involved in the school a lot to try to take her leadership and have her reach out to other families and get more families involved. Our last parent meeting we had online, we had seventy-some people attend that, which was great, which is our highest we've ever had.
Thank you. And Principal Priest. So you have the Cadillac of elementary buildings. It begs the question, technology was probably a little deeper in the infrastructure in terms of what was brought on board as they built that. But what kind of stresses do you find with your students? Is there particular groups that stick in your mind?
Thank you for the question. One of the things I'm thankful for is to be able to serve three special education programs on-site. And that's our early childhood education, our integrated program and our support center. And of course, spaces is a premium for when we're working with our youngest students because we look at our youngest students wanting to do early intervention. I'm thinking of our preschool particularly and wanting, sometimes looking at them that they are often under-resourced, room is important. And so sometimes the stress is space. I would say that we have a little bit of stressing this year also from a staffing perspective from support staff. I think across the district and even across our state, we are seeing that our paraprofessional support positions are sometimes not always filled when it comes to our support center or IP classrooms. I'm thankful that our building, we have people that work additionally very hard and very thankful for them to kind of fill in the gap. But those are, those are two particular stresses, not necessarily unique to us, but are definitely felt.
Okay, but let's explore that a little bit. Is it the pay scale or are there other factors that enter into your ability to recruit?
My best conjecture, and so I would defer to human resources and others in terms of as they look at pay scales, that has not been the communication that I've received from paraprofessionals if they are looking at other employment. When it comes to fulfilling positions as we interview, I have not had that come across to me in any of the interviews that I've run either this year or even during COVID itself. So I can't confirm that, but I also don't want to say that's not necessarily true.
Okay, but was there a drop-off prior to COVID in terms of numbers that you were seeing?
Numbers of support staff?
Yes.
I was at a different building. I was at Crestwood Elementary at the beginning of COVID. We did not experience a drop-off of staff when I was at Crestwood. This is my first year at Covington Elementary.
Okay, but that, I mean, those buildings are close, you're not?
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Are you done? I'm going to forget all my questions.
I thought I was going to just. So I don't know, anyone can take this, but I saw this smart tool and I just want to know, how do you measure that on families that English is not their first language? Smart T, right? I don't know, anyone, any of the, does that make sense?
I'm not sure if I understand the question. Can you please repeat?
So that the, the measurements that we've, you know, which is, you know, the smart?
Smarty goals?
Yeah, smarty goals.
Okay.
How do you do that?
How do you create a smarty goal?
Yeah, for families that English is not their first language.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, the equity subgroup would be an EL student, is that what you're saying? And so how you develop a smarty goal targeting EL students in the area of math, for instance?
Yes.
Okay.
Or English for a bit then.
Yeah, so if it was ELA or the subject of English or math, it doesn't matter. I would have a smarty goal to increase student achievement. EL would be the identified subgroup and then I would have a measure. And it could be I-ready, it could be another EL measurement. And I would look at most likely the two thousand and nineteen performance of that group because pre-COVID. And I would say in two thousand and nineteen, EL students in math were performing at, I'm going to make this up, twenty-five percent achievement level. And then by spring of twenty-two, on that same measurement, and let's pretend I chose SBA, that subgroup would make a ten percent gain, so they would be performing that thirty-five percent. Anywhere between a seven to ten percent gain on a state summative assessment, for instance, is about what you can do if you're really, you know, running a school well-oiled machine, everybody focused on the same activities, you can get about a seven to ten. It's pretty statistically hard to get much higher than a ten percent jump in one year on a state summative assessment. So that's how you write it? Is that answering your question?
Because what I was trying to understand is, so you're actually going through that measurement of the student. How about the parents?
So how do we communicate the SIP goal to the parents?
Right.
Okay, well, we do have SIP teams and there is parent representation on SIP teams. And so that may be one or two parents that are involved in that whole cyclical process. Some of our schools will also present their SIP each fall to their PTA or their PTO. And then sometimes in the monthly newsletter, principals will be sharing their goals and activities and progress. And so depending upon the way that the principal in the school is communicating their SIP to their community, they would typically translate the materials into different languages.
And the reason why I'm asking is because I come across those families and those things that you just mentioned, the PTA, some of them don't even know that exists.
Yeah.
So to be able to reach out to those families in a specific way or out of the box thinking is what I was trying to convey.
Yeah, well, thank you. And it makes me think about, we do post our school improvement plans for each school. It makes me think about translating them and posting them on the school websites in different languages. We haven't done that yet.
Really, just to make sure that, you know, we have, you have to think about, some of these parents came from different system of education.
Yeah.
So therefore, they're not familiar with the ways to communication that we are accustomed to.
Thank you for the question. That's, gives me a lot to think about.
I have a couple of questions. I guess my first one is, while I understand SBA and I understand at elementary, it's easier to kind of follow growth from year to year. I'm curious though about like the high school SBA, when it's kind of like a one and done. I'm curious what kind of checkpoints are in place or how you use educator-designed assessments to kind of support students.
Yeah, that's a good question. Because the SBA is that, kind of that whole piece you just said, Mr. Bento, is the one and done. We at Kentridge rely heavily on our PLCs to make sure that the assessments that we're doing is in alignment with Common Core and with the standards we do. We also work really hard to develop SBA-like prompts and SBA-type processes to do that. We have found, if you look at our data, Kentridge is among the highest in this area, is that if you can really fine-tune that and get our teachers to examine that and to do that, then we got a chance. One of the things that we've drawn at Kentridge too is that our PLCs will present their data to one another and within the departments to make sure that we're in alignment with the work that we're doing. So that's how we do it.
Awesome. And I just think about my PLCs, like I know that you talked about like core classes, but I know that since I'm a CTE teacher, sometimes we kind of feel like that we're not involved or we're not included. Not that we want to do the other work or the more work that the other departments are doing, but I just feel like sometimes like, I'm curious, like how are like the programs, the elective programs or not core classes, how are they included in this process?
In the SIP process?
In the SIP process, yeah.
In the SIP process? Yeah, that's a good question too. Is that every, you know, at the high school, ninety-five percent of all kids have to graduate, right? And with, with all the credits, that includes elective credits. And so when we're working in our PLCs, is that then it's important that they have their common summative assessments, their common formative assessments and that everybody is attaining the twenty-four credits. You could pass all your core classes and if you're not passing those elective classes, you still do not graduate. And so our emphasis on PLC work and in the emphasis of our development of our assessments that are aligned to the standards of that content and then the outreach to make sure all our kids is really critically important.
Awesome. I like hearing about the Keystone Program. I'm curious how that affects master schedule and students' ability to take classes that they want to take. I know that this is a good thing for them to be in like similar classes with other students, but how does that affect master schedule and students' ability to take their elective classes that they want to take?
Yeah. One of their classes is Keystone, which would be an elective credit. And so it has that. So they still have an opportunity to take other elective classes. It does, it does take one of their classes that could have been an elective class at somewhere else. Quite frankly, these kids need that support to be able to pass those other classes. Mr. Bento, I haven't heard one parent phone call or one kid coming saying, I want out of the program to be in an elective course. I'm getting more of the other. It's like, can we be placed in it?
I guess my last question is just a general question, I don't know for who. I know that in my district, we went through a process to, we moved to trimesters because of Core Twenty-Four. And I know that we didn't necessarily move that here. So I think about in four years, semester classes, that's twenty-four credits. So if a student fails even one class, they're off track for graduation. So I'm curious, I saw like the spring term and whatnot. I'm curious like if there's been other things, like I know there's a couple of the small schools in Tacoma have like a J-term where they could, they could take classes for two weeks in January and make up a credit or two. I'm curious if, well, we don't have a J-term, but like during winter break or something, if there's been ideas or thoughts of doing other ways since we don't have Core Twenty-Four, we don't have other options besides semesters, how do students have opportunities to make up credits? And have we considered other things like a J-term or whatever?
One of the best ways for our programs in secondary schools for the high schools is that every kid has an opportunity to earn a minimum of one point oh to two point oh at the middle schools to provide that credit that then comes up. So if you think in that terms, is that I think that we had ninety percent of our kids, that's a lie. We had, because I was thinking the previous before COVID and remote learning. So seventy-five to eighty percent of our kids come to us with one to two credits already, which then is twenty-three to twenty-two credits is what Kent School District had for years and years and years before we got to the twenty-four credits. So thankfully to our middle school colleagues who are working with their staff to provide high school level courses at that level, we can then have kids who come up. Included in that then too is that there are online courses and edgenuity courses that we have in place that can assist kids to gain additional credits. But that's how we do it.
Awesome. That's all I have.
If I can, I wanted to go back to your question, Director Bento, on electives and their role in this. From a, from a middle school, so my background is a, as a middle school principal, you know, it's important to think about this as a, it's a school improvement plan, right? It's not the language arts department improvement plan or the math department. Sometimes language arts and math teachers feel that, right? Like this is all on me. But I think when you think about, how do you mobilize an entire school to focus on literacy, right? So in my psychology class, we are still dealing with complex texts. We're still trying to make claims. We're, we're looking at that might support literacy, right? Because I'm a psychology teacher, so was I, right? So we're looking at graphs, we're interpreting data, right? So really thinking about how do you engage everybody in that school improvement work so that it's a school plan, it's not, I'm the ELA teacher, I'm the only one who's teaching literacy and everybody else doesn't have anything to do with it. We're all teaching literacy, we're all teaching data analysis skills. And from a leadership standpoint, it's just making that clear and then providing the support and the structures and the routines that allow people to do that.
For sure. And I know in my PLC sometimes, like the art teachers in mine, and we have lots of discussions about, she's like, I just want to do art, like I just want to, I just want to, I want to paint, I want the students to do ceramics. And I'm just like, well, yes. So it's just thinking about like, for maybe who, people who are resistors or people who may not see, like what are we doing to make sure that they feel a part of the process? That it's not like extra work, but they can take what they're doing and do support the goals, but making sure that it's clear, like I think.
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
Awesome. As long as everybody's done, I don't want to control all this. This is really interesting to me in so many respects because I love to see where kids can show improvement and, and feel good about themselves. Because I know even these kids that say they don't like school and stuff, they don't like school because they never really felt like they're achieving anything or they never found something that really turned them on or they never felt a part of it. I'm wondering, you know, with COVID, how have we adjusted? And this is kind of a, not a gotcha question, but I'm wondering how we've changed our approach to SIP programs? Are we expecting more to be achieved because of the loss or are we expecting less to be achieved? We expecting the same amount to be achieved? I mean, I don't know exactly what I'm looking for, but I'm trying to understand that what's the battle out there right now? When, when you read nationally, everybody's behind supposedly or a lot of them are. Does that change our SIP plans or the way we look at it?
It's a great question. Thank you for asking. One of the things I can speak to concretely is when we are looking at I-ready as a consistent measure for how students are not just doing at the end of the year, in the case of SBA, but how can we progress monitor often on a monthly basis? We have a thing called stretch growth within the I-ready program. And stretch growth was based on the assumption that if you had to make up a year of learning, and this was I-ready design even years before COVID happened, how long on average would it take to really make up one year of learning? And the answer is about three. And you see that within special education, you also see that really in what, what could a student really accomplish? The whole idea of two years in one is a little bit unfeasible. And so stretch growth for I-ready has been set to the idea of can we accomplish one year plus about a third? And so in our measurements of how students are growing, Director Farah, you saw that on our, on our big posters when you came over.
Yeah.
So I'm glad you got to see that. How can we continue to push for growth plus that extra with the intent of looking three years down the road to have made up a whole year of learning? And that's exciting because as we talk about student motivation, as we talk about being able to calculate it down to what would it really take, having those numbers and letting students track those in folders as we do on a monthly basis, there's an inherent motivation that happens as they see the progress they're making and the understanding. there's an inherent motivation that happens as they see the progress they're making and the understanding that they're gaining in. So that's, that's very one, one common way to approach that with a, with a district-wide resource such as I-Ready.
And Principal Price, you know, I've been to your school several times, and very well-run as far as I can see. And, and I see the assistant principal sitting over there who's doing a great job too.
Thank you.
And making a lot of progress with our boys, I understand, down there that we need to work with. I'm wondering if this plan that Mike Aldrich has at the high school, and probably other high schools, I'm not sure, with Keystone, could you take that and maybe implement to elementary-age kids and make any progress? Has there been any work in that area?
There has, and I appreciate you mentioning the work that, that Mr. Chastang was actually just recognized for recently by Superintendent Vela. The relationship building that I think is key to what Principal Albrecht is mentioning is definitely present in the work, as you mentioned, with the boys. That, that strong relationship building that takes place with, with good social-emotional learning curriculum and, and our morning meetings, I think are, is, is another example of that integral way of how do, that important way of, how do we, how do we build a relationship where students want to perform and want to please their teacher in an appropriate way because they're motivated by the care of the, the care of the teacher for all of the students? And that's key. So I, I do think there are elements of it. Can that be extended outside of our traditional school year? I would, I would argue yes. I think that summer programs, summer school in whatever form it could take, can definitely build in that relationship piece to keep students motivated. Because at the end of the day, the reason why that work with, as we call them, our boys, has, have been so successful is they know that there's, there's people that really care about them and, and they don't want to let them down. They don't want to let us down.
No, it works. I've done it with kids.
Yes.
I've worked with a lot of boys too.
Yeah.
Even as a female. I'm wondering if anybody can give me an idea that this Keystone, when, when we're having this different program, and, and Director Clark mentioned the ESER funds that can help with that. I'm wondering how much overall to build these programs, if there's a percentage of more finances it takes for a school to do this? Have you ever seen numbers on that at all, you know, with more staffing or whatever, percentage increase? Just curious. And if you don't have an answer, this is not a gotcha, I'm just curious.
I can, I can try to address that we don't for each school, but I can say there, there are schools get funding from Learning Assistance Program, Title I, and other federal programs, so that is broken out regularly. What I hear your question, being President Hamada, is how, how do we, how do we leverage those funds that are actually making an impact? And how do we know they're making an impact? The Success, the Success Coach, for example, which is ESER-funded, is an example, which is ESER-funded. What are some of the things that are happening at Principal Albrecht's school around that that we can scale up? And so especially during this last two years of the pandemic. So as we continue to look at current federal and state funding we already get on a formula basis, how do we see the impacts that that's making in addition to the ESER-funded position like Success Coach? So those are the things that we continue, and you heard today. How do we measure to see if the impact that we're doing as a school, school-wide, is making it? And we should know by a certain amount of timeframe that that is working, so that we can say, let's just, let's move our dollars from here over to here. And that's what building principals do yearly. That's a part of the school improvement planning process, is how do they use the resources, particularly the, what we call categorical resources, in ways that are going to get the impacts they need?
Well, to me, it's even on a further level of state, you know? They don't have a good state model for, for what's realistic, because we need a lot more nurses, just for example, in the schools. And they're only, the state is only providing so much, and we depend here on our levies to have more. But if you saw that this statistically made such a difference in certain areas of funding, and you go after it as a state overall, that that model needs to change, and it actually has some numbers and some stats. I mean, that to me could have a lot bigger impact, and, and of course, I care about this district, but everywhere's. I have a general question too about, let's see, what was this? On these SMART goals, can you give me an example on the, let's use the elementary level, of one of them, an actual thing that you're doing? And, and so I can, I like to visualize things instead of hear this in general. If somebody could walk me through that, I'd appreciate it.
So we are, just to go more specifically into what we're doing at our school, one area that we decide to focus on every school, like Director Avery said earlier, is that we have a ELA goal, a math goal, and a family engagement goal. And the goal, one of the goals that we're focused on is for ELA. We're working on reading achievement. And some of the activities that we've kind of associated with that is, one is phonics, and which we know phonetic letter sounds is important as for kids' foundation. The fortunate thing at Metta Ridge is we actually started working this right before the pandemic. So we're actually able to do that during the pandemic, and it was exciting because we saw the big drops people had in reading over the course of the pandemic. We only dropped a little bit, and I think that was because our teachers had, had really wanted to do this, and we implemented that pretty effectively. The other thing that we're, we're focused on is just making sure kids know what they're learning and why they're, why they're learning it. So turning kids on and making them more engaged in, okay, this is why I'm learning, this is actually what I'm learning. And we, it's called learning target success criteria. So making sure that every lesson, they know what's happening, they know what the, what the objective is, and then they know how to meet that objective. So kids are understanding, oh, if I do this, like A, B, and C, then I know I've met that goal. So those are the things that we're focused on. And I'm answering your question or not, but I'm, but that's, that's, that's an example of one thing that we're doing to try to, try to meet that goal.
Does anything come to mind, and I, and I know you're not directly in the classrooms, of any child or, or situation that you can pinpoint? That they walked through this, that it made a difference to them? I mean, you'd have to be in the classroom probably to see this, but I thought maybe somebody-
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can definitely think of different examples, and especially talking to my primary teachers and them sharing individual students about this, this child is making the scandal, look what's happening. It's, they're actually, the kids are excited, turn on the learning, the teacher are excited to see what the, what the kids are doing. So we've got numerous examples of that.
And another thing that, engaging our parents in any way we can. And I know sometimes a lot of our parents are just trying to get by, and it's difficult. But if we can in any way engage our parents, if they, they have the wherewithal, want to, I mean, they all want to. They just may not have the time or the understanding that they can be there. But if we can connect at home to them too, which just, which is continual learning all the way around, because they're only going to be with us so long, too. And a lot's going to happen outside of that. I'm wondering with, with this Keystone, is that going on in all the high schools or just yours, Mr. Albrecht?
I think there's a format of that going on at the high schools, but it really was a program that we began to develop this, this summer. And I know that the other three high school, comprehensive high school principals are looking at our data too and making some decisions for next year.
And it seems like, you know, when we went back and were looking at different things in an analysis at the end of the year, Director Clark and Director Farah weren't part of this, but we were looking at certain goals in certain classrooms because curriculum had made a difference. And that, I didn't hear anybody really speak about that, but I think we had purchased new curriculum, and it was making a difference in certain areas. Is that in your SIP plans? Do you look at that at all and notice that again, and what's happening with that? Changes in reading curriculum or math curriculum? I think it was reading. Am I correct?
Typically, you'll see that when we, when it's the year of a new adoption. And I, I believe at the elementary level this year, we're engaging in a, in an ELA adoption. So next year would be a year you might see in the SIP plan, an activity around implementing with fidelity the new curriculum.
Okay. Because they had shown some pretty big numbers, but then in other things, it was just kind of funny. But after curriculum, I think Dr. Watts was saying it takes three years or something before you can actually really begin to understand the statistics. I'm not totally aware of that, and I need to be quiet in case anybody else has, has any-
I just, I just wanted to ask a quick question, which is, for example, we've used, when I was with Mr. Price at the school, I-Ready. Is I-Ready used every elementary school?
Yes, yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
We're all questioned out?
I wonder just to-
Well, Ryan, if I could, the attempt to assess teacher knowledge of EL strategies as, as a package. But you have turnover in your staff. What's the impact in terms of getting everybody on the same page?
Thank you. Appreciate the question. From a leadership perspective, coming into this building as a new leader and looking early at our fall SBA data, but one benefit of taking the SBA again this year is we were able to have a staff-wide conversation that culminated in kind of our own mid-year review of ourselves as a whole staff of where our scores were. And that led to noticing that we have about 26% of our student body, 640 students, are ELL students. And we were very dissatisfied collectively as to the performance that we saw, and we want to do right by kids. And so that led to some heartfelt questioning and some, some surveys, as I showed and shared earlier, around what can we do to improve our instruction so that we can provide the best instructional strategies to students? And in that process, I'm very thankful that what we learned from teachers was that there's a desire, especially depending on when a teacher came into their own service, their own preparation program as to whether or not they themselves had ELL instructional strategies as part of that preparation program. And of course, we have a continuum of experience for teachers in our, in our school district and at Covington. And so we heard them loud and clear, as, as our job to support teachers well. We, we so to speak pounded the pavement and, and were able to secure ESER funds and work out to have GLAD instructional strategies for the second semester. They actually begin next Wednesday. We're very excited. And the staff was very excited because it's a chance for us to know this is how we can do better in the classroom, and we know that's going to have a positive result, not just for ELL students, but also for all students. Because those strategies, as they will, as they will see, are going to be transferable to all students, not just our, our EL students. Yeah, thank you for asking.
We're, we're right at 6:27. And before we conclude, I want to thank each and every one of you for a great presentation and for being here tonight at 6:30. I know you start your day very early in the morning, and you probably had enough by now. I would have anyway. But great presentation, and thank you for all your work. The board especially realizes how tough this year's been on all of us, but on you guys and everybody. And your work does not go unnoticed. So thank you very much for being here tonight. I greatly appreciate it.
President Hamada, if I may, just very quickly, in two minutes, I wanted to also thank our executive directors for learning improvement and our building leaders that you heard from today. The goal was really to give you a surface level of what, what it's like to engage in a school improvement planning process. Some of the things that we didn't hear, we don't get to hear, are those things we get to see, like Director Farah and I did when we walk to schools. And I, I know I've been with others and look forward to doing that with Director Clark. That's when you can really see the evidence of impact that things like Keystone is having on our kids, things that Mr. Chastang is doing. I got to see the kids' faces, and the kids talk to us and listen to their voice of the progress they're making and the growth they're making. And that, those are pieces that I know that are embedded in the processes that they didn't get a chance to, to share. So I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank our, our building leaders for being here tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, and invite me, hey, you know? I want to come and see what you're doing, because I think those numbers are going down, so maybe I can get out there and do something. So thank you very much. And, and right now, I want to mention that it's 6:29, 6:30, we're going to adjourn here. And the work session is adjourned for an executive session. The purpose of this special meeting is to review the performance of a public employee and to discuss with legal counsel legal, legal or financial risk of a course of action. We will return promptly at 7 o'clock for our regular meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. It's good to see people in this room tonight. It's kind of fun. I forget what it's like to have people in a room anymore. Isn't that the state of our world today? Just a couple of housekeeping rule things tonight is Director Beninter will be absent from the meeting this evening, and Dr. Jewel Harmon will be attending the meeting via Zoom. Now, I'd like to please ask our audience to rise and Director Clark to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And again, welcome to all of you. This is a meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act. We welcome the public's participation in this board meeting and thank all of you for coming and those who are viewing on the Internet. The Kent School District staff has done its best to advise you of the governor's order requiring requiring those in attendance to wear masks. Here's the process that I have to read every time for audience participation. The purpose of the board meetings is for the board to conduct its business in public. During the meeting, the board will listen to but not respond to comments from visitors. Those wishing to comment must complete a comment card and turn it into Naomi Zantella either before the meeting begins, and Ms. Zantella sits right over there if you're not aware, and and that you have to do it before the meeting begins or no later than the beginning of the legislative update. And it's just a process we do, and no cards will be accepted once the report is begun. Visitors who have completed a comment card indicating a desire to speak to an agenda item will be called at the portion of the agenda. There is a brief delay in the live stream audio. We will allow for extra time for you to make your way to the boardroom if you are in an overflow room. When it is your turn to address the board, your mask needs to maintain on while making your comment. Please state your name at the start of your testimony. Public comments will be heard after the opening during preliminary communication from the audience at specific agenda items and during final communications from the audience. Students will be the first to speak on any topic. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. You will hear a timer when three minutes is up. Please do not use specific names of staff or students or personal identifiable information. Abusive comments personally directed towards staff or board members will not be tolerated. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it is too lengthy, obscene, or irrelevant. Per board procedure, written material to provide board members with background information should be submitted to the superintendent's office at least one week in advance of the meeting. Now, I'd like to call on Director Vera for the land acknowledgement.
Thank you, President Hamada. We acknowledge we gathered upon the ancestral lands of the Makoshut Indian tribe who historically lived throughout the area between the Cascade Mountains and Puget Sound.
All right. And now, I'd like to turn to interim superintendent of ballot and ask if there's any changes to the agenda.
President Hamada, there are no changes to the agenda tonight.
All righty. All right. I'd like to entertain a motion that the agenda be accepted as read.
Make I'm make the motion to approve the agenda as it's read.
I second.
Discussion, seeing none. All those in favor of the motion of having the agenda as it's written, signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Extentions, the motion carries. We're on to recognition to point out proclamation National School Counseling Week, and I'd like to call on Director Clark to read the proclamation.
Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools at all levels to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas the school counselors help parents or guardians focus on ways to further the educational, personal, and social growth of their children, and whereas the school counselors in Washington are critical partners in the state's effort at improving academic achievement of students and reducing dropout rates, and whereas school counselors are critical to the mission of our schools and actively align their programs with school and district improvement efforts, and whereas school counselors continue to collaborate with professional organizations, public and private educational stakeholders, and school officials to implement an OSPI endorsed best practice framework to guide local districts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Directors of the Kent School District proclaim February seven through 11, 2022, as the National School Counseling Week in the Kent School District and urge all citizens to join in their observance. And if I may, as a 28-year classroom veteran of the public schools of this state, counselors are an absolute critical piece of helping students' success.
Do we have any counselors in the room by any chance? If you do, I'd like to recognize you, but how about if we give him a round of applause anyway? All right. We're on to 2.02 proclamation National Black History Month, and I'd like to call on Director Vera to read the proclamation. I'll get there.
Thank you, President Hamada. Whereas when we founded the Association for Study of Negro Life and History, now the Association for Study of African American Life and History, ASALH, on September 9, 1915, Dr. Carter G. Woodson labored under the belief that historical truth could crush falsehood and usher a new era of equality, opportunity, and racial democracy, and it has been its charge for over a century. Whereas in 1926, Dr. Woodson initiated the celebration of Negro History Week to bring attention to his mission to promote the study of black history and help school systems coordinate with their focus on the topic, and whereas in 1976, the celebration of Black History Month was decreed a national observance and expanded to include the entire month of February, and whereas today, Black History Month is supported and celebrated throughout the country by people of all ethnic and social background, and whereas more for more than a century, African American life, history, culture, and have become the major forces in the United States and the world, and whereas confident that their struggles mattered in human history, black scholars, artists, athletes, leaders self-consciously used their talents to change how the world viewed African Americans, whereas the Association for Study of African American Life and History, ASALH, has selected black health and wellness as 2022 National Black History theme, which acknowledges the legacy of not only black scholars and medical practitioners in Western medicine, but also other ways of knowing, for example, birth works, duels, midwives, naturopaths, herbalists, and et cetera throughout the African diaspora. The 2022 theme considers activities, rituals, and initiatives that black communities have done to be well-earned, whereas the Kent School District's commitment to equity and excellence for each and every student is grounded in the rich legacy, courage, remarkable, and contribution of those who sacrificed to keep these dreams alive for generations to come and build a nation that is more just and more equal to all people. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of Kent School District proclaim the month February 2022 National History Month in a school district and urges all citizens to join in this observance. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Vera, and I encourage all of us, especially in this month and every month, to do some history on our own. There's some great stuff out there on video right now, and our our own kids have put together a video that's available that I've watched a couple of times, and I mean, to go to it live a couple of years ago when we were able to, it was wonderful, and I'm looking forward to that again. So that's all, again, if we can just recognize by giving a clap for Black History Month, I'd appreciate it. And now, we're on to 2.03 proclamation Career and Technical Education Month, and Vice President Van Och, read the proclamation, please.
Thank you. I feel honored to be able to read this as a CTE teacher, so I'm reading about the CTE Education Month. So whereas February 2022 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association of Career and Technical Education, and whereas Career and Technical Education, or CTE, offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness, and whereas students in CTE programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement, and whereas CTE provides students with career exploration opportunities earlier in their educational experience, which enables them to find to make informed and beneficial decisions about their academic coursework and pursue established programs of study and career pathways, and whereas leaders in business leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges related to addressing the skills gaps and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including construction, healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, and information technology, and whereas offering integrated programs of study that link secondary and post-secondary education leads to the attainment of industry-recognized credentials, and whereas ensuring that employers have access to qualified workforce is a crucial step in ensuring productivity among the business and industry communities as well as continued economic growth and competitiveness. And whereas February 23, 2022 marks the 105th anniversary of the signing of the Smith-Hughes Vocational Education Act of 1917, which was the first major federal investment in secondary CTE and laid the foundation for bipartisan, bicaronal support for CTE that continues today. So therefore be it resolved, J. Enzley, the governor of Washington, declared February 2022 as Career and Technical Education Month in Washington and encourages all people in our state to join in this special observance.
Thank you, Director, or Vice President Van Och. Do we have any other CTE teachers in the room tonight by any chance? All right, Director, you're going to stand out because even though you're teaching a different, come on.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And now, we're up to 3.0 preliminary communication with the audience. And first off, in the order of what we do, this is the in-person student general comments, and as I understand, we don't have any, and then we're on the online student general comments, and we do not have any. Is that correct?
We do.
Oh, we do?
The in-person or red first.
Okay. Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. The first up is Jason Fields, and if you'll come up to the mic, Jason.
Thank you. I'm a KEA member with strong concerns about the removal of LGBTQ books off one of our library shelves. I was surprised and hurt when I learned about the removal, which was later supported by upper administration before a recent reversal to re-shelve. I feel it's important to point out the context in which this book pulled and occurred. The Florida Legislature recently passed the notorious Don't Say Gay bill, which, if signed into law, will ban educators from discussing topics about sexuality and gender in the classroom. A mayor in Mississippi is withholding $110,000 in public library funding because the shelves contain LGBTQ books. It's worth pointing out that the banning of queer content coincides and is affiliated with the conservative movement seeking to ban content featuring important discussions about race. The choice at Kent to remove the queer content from library shelves cannot be divorced from this greater political context, and KSD's decisions on such matters reflect its institutional values, whether those are stated values of equity or otherwise. I understand there was a question of appropriateness about one of the polled books frank discussions about sex. about sex, and I'd like to address this issue. It has been a decades-long conservative argument that any content related to gender and sexual minorities is inappropriate for children. Meanwhile, frank expressions and discussions of straight sexuality are ubiquitous in the hallways of schools, the media, and the shelves of school libraries. Let's be clear here. The supposed argument of appropriateness functions as a type of silencing, a rendering of queerness as a taboo. This rendering keeps LGBTQ people, especially children, in a world of shadows and secrecy, of closets and shame. The removal of queer content goes beyond the physical act of removing books from shelves. It's a statement that queerness is unreadable, thus unspeakable. My last point is one of intellectual values. Kent School District states that it seeks to prepare all students for college and career readiness. Will students be college and career ready if they do not have educators that can grapple with difficult content, content of which they do not agree? The removal of content annihilates the possibility to engage. The absence of engagement thwarts growth. In a recent New York Times piece, Pulitzer Prize-winning author Viet Thanh Nguyen states, "Books are inseparable from ideas, and this is what is at stake: the struggle over what a child, a reader, and a society is allowed to think, and to know, and to question." I hope that KSD students have an expansive intellectual horizon, not one narrowed by a shallow conception of appropriateness. Thank you.
So he comes right now?
Yes.
All right, next up is Mercury Kirkpatrick. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Mercury Kirkpatrick, yes.
Mercury, okay, that's a little different. Thank you.
When I was in the ninth grade, I was assigned to read the book Speak in my English Language Arts class. This book is told from the point of view of a cisgender, presumably heterosexual girl dealing with the aftermath of being forcibly drugged and raped by a cisgender, presumably heterosexual guy. It shows the difficulties that she experiences returning to high school as she attempts to deal with that trauma, and her primary response to the psychological toll of that event is to become silent. When it's eventually revealed what happened to her that led to this silence, the book uses sexually suggestive statements, such as "the feeling of him inside me." I personally found that book very helpful. It was empowering to me as a survivor of sexual assault myself to find some of my own experiences reflected back in that book, and it gave me the strength that I needed to share my story with a few trusted adults and put myself on the path from healing to healing from my own trauma, because literature has an impact on human life and interaction. By that same token, then, books about queer and trans people in middle and high schools can conceivably be considered empowering to queer and trans students in middle and high schools. No one asks if you're eighteen before they rape you. If they want to exert that power over you, they're just going to do it. And while we live in a world where rape is a reality, it is crucial that survivors of any age are able to find realistic depictions of both the act and its long-term effects in fiction. Queer people don't become queer when we turn eighteen. Most of us are born this way. And when you're young and you've only ever seen cisstraight people everywhere you look, you probably won't even realize that queer and trans people exist, let alone that you might be one of them. I know this from experience. When the advisor of my GSA brought in Jack of Hearts and other parts at our last meeting, I opted to take it home. And over the course of the last week, I've read it cover to cover and recorded extensive notes. Jack of Hearts is not just a book about queer people. If I had more than three minutes, I could give an entire literary analysis of all the elements in this book that make it valuable to middle and high school libraries, but as it is, I'll keep it simple and true to my own experiences. In this book, Jack faces blatant homophobia from straight and queer people alike. He is stalked and threatened by a fellow student. He struggles with anxiety attacks. These are all things that I have also dealt with, and the stalking especially is something that makes you feel so incredibly alone and isolated. When that stalking is accompanied by threats of physical harm or blackmail, one wrong decision can ruin a lot of things for you, and you feel trapped because you want to make it stop, but every option seems like it's going to bring horrible punishments down on you. And that's not exclusive to queer people. That is a valuable thing for anyone to see depicted. Speak was required reading. Jack of Hearts is not. I can't help but wonder why it's all right for a book with a semi-graphic depiction of non-consensual MF in a course to be part of the essential curriculum, while a book that briefly references exclusively consensual MM sex is removed from the school library, where it could well sit for years without ever being touched by a student. Is that my time? I'm sorry. Thank you.
You can finish. You can go ahead and finish.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to make that judgment tonight.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, you were interrupting.
It's not an accident that all of the books that are being challenged are books about queer people. We deserve to see ourselves represented just as much as straight people do, and we need that. We need to feel heard. Thank you.
All right, it looks like we have a group of people speaking together. The first person that's going to speak is Lisa Brennan?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Dr. Lisa Brennan. Honored members of the school board, never in the history of Washington has your job been so difficult. I extend my gratitude for your service. Since the National School Board Association has attempted to weaponize the FBI against concerned parents, I'm unfortunately compelled to state the disclaimer. This letter and the enclosed documents are in no way meant to cause you to feel threatened in any way. I hope that you see these documents as an opportunity to receive support. The enclosed public disclosure requests have been served to all directors of the Kent School District. Many districts across the state, including Seattle School District and several more throughout King County, will be or already have been served the same documents over the next thirty days by thousands of parents statewide who have come together as a unified voice. To ensure that this effort is recognized as a demonstration of support, the King County Sheriff has also been given a copy of these documents and informed of our peaceful intent. We recognize there is a fundamental conflict of interest between school government and parents. School government has a vested interest in the system as a whole, while parents have a vested interest in the children. We have identified that the source of this conflict may stem from the fact that our local school boards have been forced to give away increasingly more decision-making authority to WASTA and other state agencies. The Superintendent of Public Instruction, Chris Reichdahl, has clearly threatened to withhold taxpayer funds that rightfully belong to our school district based on whether or not we comply with health policies we may or may not agree with. Nowhere in the revised code of Washington is power granted to Mr. Reichdahl or OSPI to withhold or bribe with the funds. They are tasked to dispense to local districts. Is it possible that if Mr. Reichdahl indicates or acts on the threat of withholding funds, this would imply extortion on his part? My colleague Neil will continue this statement.
All right, I'm calling to the podium Neil Vanish, is that correct?
Yeah, that's a hard last name. It's like Spanish whippoord, miss.
Thank you.
With this mask on, you just have to imagine a smile under here. We, the people, founded this country with a structure that was designed to keep the greatest authority at the local level of government. Yet our governor and state agencies have made unilateral decisions for the whole population while ignoring the voices of school boards and parents. Perhaps we lost sight of that original vision of a strong local authority when we let the state and federal agencies like WASTA, OSPI, and NSBA gain enough control to withhold our state funding over matters that should be a personal medical choice for every citizen. All of us share the responsibility of getting ourselves into this dangerous predicament of a few people dictating to the masses. We also share the responsibility of getting ourselves out of this predicament. There's a solution and a path forward. The documents enclosed are our first act of helping you. Our local school board, take back your rightful authority to determine how best to represent the parents of this district. Please use these public disclosure requests as an opportunity to educate yourselves and us, so we can better understand the entanglement we find ourselves in with OSPI and WASTA and other state agencies who are overstepping their lawful boundaries. WASTA has been treating Washington students and parents as if they belonged to one large district rather than respecting the authority of the two hundred and ninety-five elected school boards in this state. We, the parents of Washington, finally comprehend how little authority you have left to represent us. It is time we come together to restore your authority and ours. In addition to providing the information requested in these documents, we ask the Kent Board do the following. Reach out to our district's legislator expressing your support of Representative Joel McIntyre's bill to make WASTA membership optional, returning decision-making authority back to the local level. There's going to be some other form of bill coming out on this later, because this one was benched. We strongly urge WASTA to withdraw membership from the NSBA. Currently, almost twenty other states have left the NSBA, and Washington parents are very disappointed to see WASTA's silence on the matter. Third, pass a resolution acknowledging and affirming that parents are the primary stakeholders of their children's future. Denoskett School Districts recently passed such a resolution, and its neighboring districts are considering doing the same. A copy of this resolution can be provided to you. And my colleague will continue this statement.
All right, next up, I believe, is Jennifer Brother.
Thank you. As we finish the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we envision a harmonious partnership between parents, school district leaders, and legislators to restore the freedom of personal choice over what our teachers and students wear on their faces and put in their bodies, as well as restore authority to the local level of government. However, if these freedoms are ignored by the Kent School Board, many more parents will feel compelled to take their children out of the public school system by the fall of twenty twenty-two. As you are aware, over fifty-five thousand children have been withdrawn from the Washington State Public School System over this year, and that number will more than likely triple if mask mandates are upheld and a COVID vaccine is made a requirement of attendance. As a body of parents across Washington State, we have heard your collective plea for cooperation and help. You've been sincerely telling us your hands are tied by WSSDA and OSPI. We understand you now, so together let's untie your hands and restore your authority to represent us, the parents of Kent. I am a parent of one of those fifty-five thousand children that was taken out in the September of this last year. She is a sophomore this year, and I refused to have her sit in a mask for six hours a day. She is doing online schooling. Not only did I refuse to have her sit in a mask, but I also wanted her to understand and know that her body is not in the authority of somebody else except her own. I do not want that message to be sent to my teenage daughter for the rest of her life, and that I stand quite strong for. My daughter will not return to the public school system, the Kent School District, if these mask mandates and the vast mandates remain in effect. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
All right, and we're on to Erica, is it Ferny, Jerry? Excuse me. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me and letting me speak for three minutes. I did have some notes, but I've been very moved by our young person that came up here. And that kind of brings me around, and I applaud you, and unfortunately, I can't believe I'm saying this, but the KSD leadership, to thank you for keeping the mask mandates. I need all of you parents to know that every single teacher has a stake in your child's development and their education, and we care about them. So do the custodians. So do all the people who work in the kitchens. So do all the principals. So do all the counselors. So do all the psychologists. There's millions of us across this country that also have a stake. My body is not a Petri dish. My colleagues are not a Petri dish. We don't want this to happen forever. We're just as annoyed as everybody, but my colleagues are dropping like flies. And the KSD leadership has the nerve to question whether or not we're getting it at the schools. And my question is, prove that we're not. Why does it matter? They're denying our COVID sickness days. They're saying, how dare you take a half-day off and need to recuperate from getting vaccinated? It's that, like, chipping away at us like that is not helpful. Counseling negotiations with not just the teachers' union, but the custodians' union and the bus drivers' union, it's not nice. I mean, I'm a second-grade teacher. I don't know what other kind of language I can use, but if people behave like that in my classroom, we circle up and we talk about it. So please continue with your promotion of diversity. Please continue supporting our beautiful, beautiful LGBTQ, I'm sorry, LGBTQ students. I am so glad I am the only white person in my classroom. It's divine. I have the world in my classroom every day, languages, culture, what they wear, their ideas. It's really important. And you know what? They are totally on board with wearing masks. They don't have a problem with it. They don't see it as an impingement on their rights or their bodies. We see it as taking care of our community, because my parents are actogenarians, and I have to worry. I get tested every single time before I go visit them, because I can't imagine bringing that, and it doesn't matter where I caught it. But these masks are helping us. Thank you.
All right, next up is Jerel Thomas.
Hi, and it's Jerel. I just want to tell you, you say masks are helping, I said not according to the CDC. Hey, I want to talk to the board about district-sponsored religious discrimination. The state issued a vax mandate in October that required all school employees to be fully vaxxed or to be terminated. This is said to have been done to protect the public from COVID. I was granted a religious exemption from the vax due to my sincerely held religious beliefs. The accommodation I was granted was that I would have to test weekly or face disciplinary action. According to the latest definition of being fully vaccinated, that means that you had a booster shot. We have many, many of my colleagues We have many, many of my colleagues who have not received the booster shot, therefore they are no longer considered to be fully vaccinated. Yet they are not required to be tested weekly. The only difference between me and people who have not received the booster is the sincerely held religious belief. So it appears that if you have a sincerely held religious belief, you're blatantly being discriminated against and being forced to go in for this weekly testing. Since I have a little bit of time, one thing I would like to ask the board to consider. Other districts, notably Highline, which is right next door to us, their accommodation was that people with religious accommodations would fill out the daily attestation, just like we did when we returned in-person last spring. I'd ask the board to consider that option, primarily because this weekly testing has done nothing to stop the spread, to do anything. It's been taking up to six days to get the results. I've gotten results back that said, oh, we couldn't, there wasn't enough stuff to read. I myself got COVID at the beginning of January from my fully vaxxed, mask-wearing daughter. So what happened was, I tested as part of my employment on January 4th. I wanted to return to work because I didn't have any symptoms, but I had to have a negative test starting on January 5th. Because I wanted to return to work and I needed the result, I went and tested at the King County site. That's when I got my positive result. If I relied on the testing requirement for the district, I didn't have to report that my daughter got COVID. I could have just come to work. I would have got the results back. A week later, on the 11th, I would have tested again, and it would have taken, at that time, it was up to five days. I would have gone to work. I would have been spreading. I was asymptomatic but positive. What has been removed from all of this is the individual responsibility that people just naturally have. The reason why I didn't go back to my school and become a super spreader was because of my own responsibility. Thank you.
It looks like we're on to some online comments. Now, Ms. Zentl, do we have some time here for that? Or how are we doing time-wise?
President Hamada, members of the board, interim Superintendent Vella, we have about six minutes left for this comment period, so I will read until that timer goes off.
Okay, thank you very much.
The first online comment submitted was from Darren Hewson. As a teacher librarian and parent of two KSD students, I am writing to express concern about our processes and how they are being carried out within the KSD. The first and foremost is regarding book challenges and book selection. In this and in other instances, our very process shows a lack of trust in our professional staff and a lack of respect for our students' personhood and the ability of our students to make choices. The role of education is to help our students learn to think for themselves, to be lifelong learners with the skills to analyze, interpret, and discover. Libraries are one of the only places in our educational structure that allows for our students to the full autonomy of choice, and that needs to be protected. We also need to trust our professional librarians and their training when it comes to book selection and vetting. Even as a parent, I know that in my quest to protect my kids, I run the risk of limiting them and even harming them with my overprotection when it comes to limiting their knowledge. As a librarian, our value is diversity in our collections and making sure we try to have books that will meet our students where they are. It is, of course, especially concerning when every book that is being challenged is a book that addresses the LGBTQIA+ community. As we reexamine our processes, I hope we will follow them, but I also hope that the processes itself will show respect for our students and for our professional librarians. The next comment submitted was from Michelle Mahirin. February 9, 2022. Good evening, school board members, staff, and community members. My name is Michelle Mahirin, and I started in the Kent School District in the fall of 2019 as an inclusive education program specialist. I have taught in various capacities in both general and special education, including, but not limited to, juvenile detention, residential treatment, and comprehensive school campuses. I grew up in a small northern Idaho town in the 1970s and 80s. We had two junior high schools and just one high school. I knew early on I was gay, and I had better figure out how to hide it. I had zero role models, not counting Jack Tripper on Three's company. We didn't talk about how I felt. I was lost. There is always a place kids can go and be seen and heard. That place, of course, is school. When Library Day came, I found freedom. My mom had me enrolled in Campfire Girl Club called Bluebirds, but on Library Day, I could find the Boys Life magazines and read about camping trips and being outside. I checked out Hardy Boys Mysteries to supplement Little House on the Prairie and my mom's other required reading. I cannot imagine how broken I would have felt running up to the magazine rack and finding my treasure was gone, or since I was a girl, my choices weren't appropriate because I was a girl. When we ban books, it sends the message we are banning people or ideas. Now, as a 50-year-old, successful educator, I can't help but feel forbidden too. Middle and high school students struggle enough with their identity, and a former emotional behavior center teacher, many of the kids I work with were wrangling with their own sexuality amidst peers, the media, sometimes families, other staff members, even their own cultures. We all want to feel seen. Representation matters. These issues should start conversations in schools and communities. I spent time in my classes teaching students. There are people in the world, they may not want to play Xbox with the evening, in the evening, but they could probably handle a quick turn and talk. There are apps I don't want, and so I don't download them. I am certainly not going to demand my friends uninstall theirs. The joy I feel seeing kids holding hands with who they love, their buttons on their backpacks telling us their pronouns is indescribable. Progress isn't perfection. Let's keep the needle moving forward, not back. Thank you for reading my statement respectfully. Michelle Mahirin, Masters of Education. There's one minute left on the clock. Would you like me to continue reading?
I think we need to go on.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We're on to 4.0, and that would be interim Superintendent Ellis's report.
Thank you, President Mott. This evening, I want to begin by saying thank you for your support of our levy. Thank you to our voters, our district staff who supported the informational campaign, and our community members and our district staff who supported all of that campaign, including our volunteers who dedicated time and money to the citizens' campaign. Today, with updated vote totals, the levy is passing with a 52.21% of vote. Given the low voter turnout and what is left to count, I am confident that the outcome will be positive. Once again, the voters have shown that our community values education and cares deeply about the future of our students. For that, I'm truly grateful. I'm excited that we can maintain educational programming in our district. In addition, the passage of the levy secures our financial stability. It reinforces to our students, families, and staff that we will continue our efforts to meet our district goals of high-quality instruction and strong social-emotional support for students. And right now, stability to support growth is just what our district needs. However, I'm not overlooking a significant percentage of voters who did not support the levy. I hear your concerns. I'm listening. The COVID pandemic has deepened a divide in our community. This divide can also be seen in the election results, even when favorable. Yet, many within Team KSD and our community are working to overcome this division and see the beauty and the strength in our diversity and differences, and they have my unwavering support. And you have my commitment to continue our efforts to move forward together to support our district and community, for we are truly stronger when we do work together. I believe in the Kent School District. I am proud to serve as your interim superintendent. I have been a proud member of Team KSD and this community for a very long time. I believe that our district can provide the educational experience that will meet the needs of all students and prepare them for a future of their choice. I believe we are better suited to do this when the community supports our schools. Thank you again for voting. I look forward to the election being certified next week. This month, we celebrate Black History Month. Last week, our board approved a resolution supporting Black Lives Matter. That has been over a year in the making. I want to thank Kent Educators of Color Network members, previous board members, and superintendent, and staff for the work done in the past that led to the resolution being passed by the board last week. Thank you to our board. Resolutions alone do not bring change in our classrooms, in the boardroom, or in community. Still, they are one small way to demonstrate our commitment to ourselves and others about the kind of district we're committed to building together. I look forward to seeing the many ways that our students and staff are celebrating Black History Month in my school visits each week this month. We also are celebrating CTE Month in February, and our CTE students also have a lot to celebrate this year. 12 students from Kent Lake and eight students from Kentwood qualified to compete at the DECA state competition next month. In addition, students in creative cooking classes are participating in an Iron Chef competition. Our KSD automotive students have earned 670 Safety and Pollution Prevention Industry certifications. Computer applications students have earned 184 Microsoft Office Specialist certifications, and culinary and marketing students have earned 129 Washington State Food Worker Cards so far this year. And these are just a few highlights in our CTE program. I look forward to sharing more later this month as we celebrate our students in CTE throughout the month of February. Later this month, students and staff will have the opportunity for some well-deserved rest during midwinter break. I certainly understand what a challenge this year has been due to COVID, changing guidelines, inclement weather, closures, and the stress caused by the pandemic. Everyone has been impacted, some more than others. I know many of us are ready to shift the conversation with state officials and policymakers from the pandemic to the endemic and start making or talking about the return to school as we once knew it. While I do not know what this may look like or when this will happen, I remain hopeful that we will get there. Until we do, because community transition remains at a high level in King County, our priority is to support the health and well-being of our entire KSD community. So we will continue with our higher mitigation strategies through February. We will continue following the current Washington State Department of Health guidance, and we will reassess and adjust as needed, just as we've done during the entire pandemic. We will get through this by working together to support a healthy, safe, and successful school year. Thank you for your continued partnership. This concludes my report.
Before I go into 5.0, I want to just point out, this is the last chance to fill out a comment card and put it in the blue box back there if anybody, it's now going to be supposedly closed from this point on, so if you have your last cards, make sure you get it up there. And now I'd like to turn to Director Fox and have him give us our legislative update.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, President Hamada. As you know, this session is a very short session, just like, it's about a month left. There were, any bill that did not make out of committee, it's almost unimaginable for it to make it. There were, you know, I mentioned the last meeting, there were five WASDA priorities, improvement of health and safety for students and staff, support for special education programs, funding that reflects the current reality, enhance infrastructure to bolster student learning, and what have you. So there were 17 bills that WASDA had prioritized for this session, and it's only now 10 left because some of them did not make out of the committees. Out of that 10, there are three that WASDA is prioritizing, one of which is HB 1664, which has, and if I, you know, elaborate on that one, it's concerning the prototypical school formulas for physical, social, emotional support for schools. And that bill has the ability to pass this session, which is very, you know, good to hear that because of the time that it requires to go through. There are two other bills, SB 5563, and that is concerning enrollment stabilization funding to address enrollment declines due to COVID. And that one with some, and also, which is also the sister bill of HB 51590, and they have, with a few changes, that might also pass, but still, we can say 100%. The thing I wanted to have for this year was take some kids to Olympia, but with this short session, I don't know if it's possible because we have to plan ahead and we've got only four weeks left. So maybe, hopefully, that will be something that we have to postpone it for next session. My aim is to make sure that we start right after the session ends, get together, and figure out our priorities and coincide that with WASDA. And I encourage each one of us to do some, if you can, testifying for the bills. If I go a little bit deeper on the other seven bills, for example, HB 1833, which is establishing an electronic option for submission of household income information required for, you know, food, how kids meals and things like that. Also HB 1878, that one is in the appropriation, maybe we'll make it, maybe we won't. And that deals with increasing public school participation in community eligibility provision for the United States Department of Agriculture. SB 5798, increasing public participation in community eligibility provision in the United States. There's a couple of bills dealing with funding reflecting the current reality, which is HB 1664. That is also one that might make it out. Equitable and, you know, ample resources implementation basic education, HB 1808, it's in the House Rules Committee, and that's about transportation funding. It is, my report will be short, you know, here or not, because of the bills that are going to drop off due to timing issue. And all I can say is that we're going to get ready for next year, by the end of the year, that we can get more appropriation from the legislators. I also want to talk about making sure that we also have the legislators. I also want to talk about making sure that we also have the ability to contact our representatives, you know, the two representatives and the senator from our district, to make sure that we are also pulling our efforts to make sure some of these bills that are going to come up next year are coming out of the committees. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Director Ferrin. You're catching on. You're catching up.
Thank you.
We appreciate the work that you're putting in there, and I'm sure it's going to be a real learning experience for you and for us.
Thanks.
All right, we're on to 6.0, Budget Status Update. And I'd like to have interim superintendent introduce our next speaker.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Hamara. I'd like to invite Mr. Ben Rarick, our Executive Director of Budget and Finance, to begin our first presentation this evening.
Good evening, Board Members. It's my pleasure to present a Budget Status Update with information through the month of January. I understand for some of you, this is the first such presentation you've seen. So in a couple places, I'll kind of stop and try to articulate some of the meaning that some of you others have heard over and over. But I'll also note that there are a lot of slides here that have some, you know, some real financial detail that I typically don't go over line by line. And the slides kind of build on one another. So by the time we get to the end, there are some summary slides that kind of pull all the information together in a way that's a little more visually intuitive. So keep that in mind. Questions you may have on Slide 2 may be answered by the slide on Slide 8, for example. Okay, I think it'd be wise to start the presentation with the conclusion, so that you kind of have a thought as to what I think the high-level takeaways of the data are that you're about to see. And I would offer three takeaways. The first is that we're going to show in a variety of different ways that spending is pretty much in line with what we would expect it to be with our budget. Okay? The second takeaway is that revenue is not. Okay, revenue is down. Why is revenue down? Because enrollment is down. So there'll be a number of ways to show that. And the third takeaway is really that if I were a board member and I was hearing this presentation, I would want to just tell, okay, we okay? What's the?
Yes, that's exactly the question.
Giving me five pages of data here, what am I, you know, what's the, and I think the overarching conclusion here is that we are in a short-term position of strength, but we have long-term challenges. And if you can, if you can grasp that, it will help you understand that, and on some of these slides, I'll say this is an area of concern. And then on other slides, I say we're in good shape. And that's what that means, is that short-term we're in good shape, long-term I see some concerns that we need to take seriously. And both of those things are true. Okay? So there's a series, about three or four very detailed slides that I show for purposes of transparency, but are, I will pull some high-level points out. Here, a couple things. This shows from, this is a revenue slide, and basically it's showing what our revenue collection is relative to the budget that the board adopted last summer. Our revenue collection is more or less in line with what I would expect if you take under consideration the fact that enrollment is down. Two things I want to highlight here. First, the 2,000 line called local non-tax, you see that? That's way down. And that comprises a number of things, but I wanted to offer a little bit of a celebration here, and that is that thanks to the leadership of this board and a number of executives that are here this evening, the Kent School District has dramatically reduced the number of fees that it collects for various educational programs offered in this district. That was an emphasis in last year's budget. So part of the drop that you see in the, in the local non-tax is the fact that we simply have, in a good way, reduced the number of fees. The standard for schools charging a fee now is very high. We have very few of them across the district, and we may in fact be eliminating more of them. And so you see that showing up in the data. Second thing I'll point out here is that you're going to start to see this 6,000 line called federal ESAR. Okay, our, through December, our ESAR claims are very low. When I come to you in February, excuse me, in March, you'll see that line spike way up. So you're going to start to see some large ESAR claims in the late winter and early spring, and we will get into that here in subsequent slides. Okay, so you just looked at revenues. This is a detailed rendition of expenditures, kind of in the same format. You know, whereas revenues don't necessarily come in equal increments throughout the months, so you can't say, oh, we're 33% of the year through, so we should have 33%. It doesn't work that way on the revenue side. It's a little closer to working that way on the expenditure side. So we would like to see some pattern of uniformity. So in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see that it says target 33.33%. So through the month of December, we're a third of our way through the fiscal year. And if the spending relative to budget is higher than that, I start, I start digging around and seeing why. Okay? We're at, you'll see 30.1%, and that's right about where I want to be. Spending is in line pretty much with what I would expect to see. And then my eye does what I would imagine yours does, was it goes down that 21, 22 column, it says, are there any categories there that are a lot higher than 30%, right? And there's a couple. One sticks out being the district-wide support line, 97. So there's kind of two reasons why that might be the case. The first is some of the larger non-salary expenses in 97 are like big contracts, maybe legal bills, insurance policies, things that we don't necessarily pay monthly but might come in a bulk payment. And so spending can be lumpy in that respect, right? So I show you this here in December, it shows 36%. The next time we look at it, it might be down. So some cost centers, some programs are less uniform than others. Okay? This is an expenditure by object show. Okay? This is kind of the tale of two budgets here. So the top line is everything related to compensation. You see the 2, 3, and 4,000. Okay? And look all the way to the far right. You see that? Up far right? You'll see when you compare percent of budget expended from last year and this year, numbers are pretty tight. It's pretty much in the same range of low 30%, which is what you would expect. Now let's look down at the 5, 7, 8, and 9,000 series. It's not at all what you see, right? So why would that be when you're thinking about last year and you're thinking about this year? Right? So for the first time ever, we were in a completely virtual environment. Lots of uncertainty about when we were going to go back. So principals have difficult time kind of launching maybe some of the programs that they would typically. I mean, it really was kind of a subsistence mode of like, so a lot of the contracts, a lot of the travel, there was no travel, right? There was absolutely no travel. The equipment purchases under capital outlay, those are things that were simply just not happening. This year, you can see we've rebounded, and you're seeing more normalcy in the budget pattern. But you're going to see slides later that make it seem like our spending is just, you know, up by 700% in some of the categories. And that's the context you need to have, is that last year we didn't spend at all. So it's, it's 700% increase over essentially nothing. Okay? This is a helpful slide. I think of the slides you've seen so far, this one's, I think, one that is a good one to check each month in some detail. This is going to show you, on the left is revenue, on the right is expense. Okay? And it is showing you year-to-year revenue and year-to-year expense same month. Okay? Helpful slide. Takeaways would be on the left side, revenue is up 3%, right? Bottom right-hand corner of that graph. On the right side, expenditures are up 10.5%. Expenditures up more than revenue. Why would that be? Enrollment is down, right? So when you look at what's happening on the revenue side, by far, our largest funding sources are state, right? Both of them are down. And those will go down even further as we get through the spring. Our funding increases were really our local levy. Now remember, this reflects not the levy we just voted on, but the prior levy where we had a step up, and we're in the midst of that second step up. So we did experience an increase in funding in that second year of the existing levy, and so that's what you see happening there. On the expenditure side, you know, salary is up about 6%, and that's pretty much what we were, we were planning. But look, look down there we just talked about, right? The non-salary arenas, it's all over the place, because we didn't spend anything last year, right? So take that 633% with a grain of salt, because that's basically comparing a little bit of travel to virtually no travel at all. Okay? Let's get into some enrollment slides. Okay? We're down. We're down for five consecutive years. Okay? That's something that I think each of you should kind of know as a fundamental reality about Kent. That's not true of every district. We've been down in enrollment pretty much across the board. Even in running starts, the first year that I've been here that we've been down in running start, which has been on a geometric growth pattern for as long as I can remember. This represents that in graphical form. So you got five lines, and each year it gets lower. Okay? And I actually have February year data now, and we're down another 24 in February. So that blue line there at the bottom kind of has the same trajectory as the red dotted line there. You know, it goes a little bit down that next month. So this is a, this is a concern. Okay? In relationship to staffing, right? So we are up in staffing, the, both the green and the blue are certificated and classified respectively. And as you know, our challenges in hiring classified staff, you'll see that evident here, that's not where the growth is. But we've had growth on the certificated side over time, and that produces lower and lower ratios. So lower ratios are higher staff, right? Right? And so every time that you receive a financial report, whether I'm presenting or not, you can flip to the last pages, and you will see this graph, and it's a good thing to kind of keep an eye on. All right. Now, depending on how much detail you want to get into, I always encourage board members, there's really three graphs that if you keep your eye on these three graphs, and you understand these three graphs, you really have your finger on the pulse of the financial situation of the district. I mean, I've given you a lot of information here, but there's three of them that are really kind of summary, you know, vital signs, as it were, to use the health metaphor. And this is one of them. So this shows as a line graph, the month-to-month fund balance of the district and the general fund. Okay? If I showed you this graph the first year I was here, it really literally would not even be on the graph for history for some of the newer board members. But now we're in a really, really solid range here. And so, you know, through December, we're at $52 million. Last year, we finished at $58 million. And that is frankly, a quite strong place to be as a school district. Our concerns are not short-term liquidity or stability of our general fund. We're in good shape on that. Now what you're going to start to see is you're going to come back, and you're going to look at this graph in a month, in two months, and you're going to start to see some movement around, because that's when the state starts to reflect lower enrollment, and they're sending us, so that number's going to come down, it's going to get closer, perhaps even lower than the yellow. And then we're going to start making some large ESAR claims, and it's going to bounce back up. Why? Because that's what ESAR is for. ESAR was provided to school districts to stabilize the program in periods of low enrollment. That was almost, you know, that was the essence of that program. So you'll see that line start to move around, and that's why. This is graph number two that I think is really important to understand. If you, you know, kind of the idea, if you had three graphs, this is graph number two. So this one's fund balance, right? This one, excuse me, shows your ratio of revenues to expenditures. Just think about it as your home budget. It's really not, it may seem complicated, it's not. How much did you make in a month? How much did you spend in a month? Did you make more than you spent? Simple question, right? Just, that's all this is. If the number is over one, we made more than we spent in a particular month. If it's lower than one, we didn't. So go ahead and like, let's look at last year. Okay, so the last year is the dark blue line. See, that's 2020, 2021. And you see, we ended up at .98 in August? That's a pretty good, I mean, ideally, you want to be one, right? But .98 hovering around one, that's a good place, because that means you're not using, you're not relying on a lot of your fund balance, and nor are you accumulating a lot of fund balance, right? So that blue line's, it's a good place to be. That's kind of home, right? We're not going to be on that blue line. As you can see, through December there, that's kind of the, what is that, a royal blue, or what is that? Lighter?
Lighter, yeah.
The color of Israel's tit.
Yeah, his tit, exactly.
You know, the enrollment decline is starting to manifest, right? And it's going to manifest even more. And the only reason it won't manifest even more is we're going to make some pretty substantial ESAR claims. Okay? So I started the presentation about talking about short-term strength, long-term challenge, right? So we're going to use those ESAR claims to keep that line up there, right? Keep it all moving through the months, keep it up there, keep it up there. Well, this money's not forever, right? Eventually, that money goes away. Okay? So there's a bar graph representation of that previous chart of actual enrollment December for the last five years. I think you're looking at about 20, so about 2,300? I have it written down. 2,374 when we're looking at five years of December. That's a lot of kids. Okay? Short-term strength, we talked about, right? On what basis would you say that then? Well, here's one graph. So these are our peer districts. Okay? And I just went, I went into everybody's, I looked at everybody else's year-end reports, just like I looked at ours. So I went and grabbed, grabbed the other six, the other five. And this is what our fund balance is relative to our total expense. And you can see, we're second among the group of six. Only Auburn has a higher percentage, their fund balance, I don't think their, their actual dollar number is larger than us, but they're a smaller district, right? So as a percent in proportion, we're second among that district. So we have a healthy fund balance. There's no denying that. That's, and that's a point of pride. Okay? So remember the takeaways we started the presentation with, right? Short-term strength, long-term challenge. The short-term strength is we have a strong fund balance. Okay? We have ample, we're ample capacity in our ESAR claiming for the next at least two years. Okay? I don't have any like immediate short-term concerns about our financial viability. But long-term challenges, what are those? Well, it's what we just talked about, right? Keeping that line up, keeping that line, and then the money runs out. When does the money run out? Well, under our current understanding of the federal guidelines, 23, 24 is the last year we can be making claims on those eligible dollars. And ideally, we would want to be making fewer claims in 23, 24, so that we're kind of winding down, right? So that's a real puzzle, because staffing is, it's not like you switch staffing every week, right? It takes, it takes a multi-year plan. So I want to be very clear that the staffing that we have right now is not sustainable if we didn't have ESAR. Okay? And that's not really an ambiguous point. That's just pretty much a fact. But, you know, over the next three years, a lot of things could happen. We could get our kids back. We could, you know, legislature could pony up for more stabilization money. There's a lot of factors. So ESAR is really a blessing in this space. And I guess the final point here is that it's giving us the opportunity to kind of, instead of making any sort of drastic, immediate staffing reductions, to have a three-year plan. And I use the phrase stair stepping, so that we take full advantage of, of the protection and mitigation that ESAR offers us. So that completes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Director Ferrin?
Yes, I have a question.
I see your head.
I know, just, that, that second line is-
Director.
Yes, I have a question.
I see your head.
I know, just that, that second line is, is what troubles me when, when, when I see staffing's not.
It's an inconvenient reality.
Right.
I don't imagine it's a popular thing to say, but.
So, so, do we have a plan that, you know, stepping down the?
That's a test somewhat.
This is really, yeah, that's, that's the thing I'm so not happy about. You, let's say for argument, and I always like to look at things, um, you know, what can hurt us more than if everything is, you know, enrollment comes back up, we get, you know, that's the, the ideal way. But what if that we don't get enrollment up?
Right.
We develop a three-year plan.
That's what I mean.
A vision.
That, so, can we start that?
We should be starting that, yes.
Oh, yeah, that, that, that's literally, would I lose sleep over?
Thank you. That's what, that's what I, yeah, that's what I'm getting at is that you start doing that now so that we can actually see a, a clear picture of where we are.
Yeah, and, and I want to, I, I also don't want this to be, um, like, there is a concern and I don't want to mince words about the concern, but I also don't want to over frighten you in the sense that a lot of the districts in our region are in the exact same situation. You know, I, I, I don't want to kind of portray us as being in this crisis situation when we're not. It's just that, you know, I was brought here under conditions where we did not have that plan over multiple years. And so, I'm kind of being overly, uh, transparent and forceful about this point so that it's abundantly clear. Um, because, you know, it'll be necessary for us over the next two years. The next three years, actually, um, to be taking, you know, kind of, you know, measured steps. I, you know, I'm search, searching for the right phrase.
Right, whatever it's called.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, so, yes, we are, we are developing that plan literally concurrent with the fiscal year '23 budget. That's, that is the process.
Nice. I mean, we do this with our own lives, right? That this is, you know, we realize our revenue coming in.
Right.
Yeah, so, that's.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Eric, again, I really appreciate your presentation.
Thank you very much.
I, I mean, I, since I've come on this board for two years, you make my life feel better that way.
Very good to hear, I appreciate that.
And that's, that's saying a lot because, as I've said before, I never want to know, I never want to be in a meeting and be up here and not know what happened. And you're pretty good about explaining that. Again, I think, I think sometimes, um, err on the side of meeting somewhere is in the middle, of not, you know, drastically doing anything.
Yeah.
And not also being Pollyanna and said, oh, well, this could happen. It's just finding a middle ground where we can find that three-year plan and start talking about it. And I think that's excellent. And, and again, we also with the ESR funds, hopefully, maybe our community, once they get a, some of our partners and stuff, get a, a more of a ground into us and they, maybe they can start taking up those where we have given to them, they can start promoting their own more and find funds outside of it because it takes a whole, not just a school district, but a whole community wrapping this around all this to get it done sometimes. So, thank you. I don't have any more questions.
Great.
Anybody else on the board?
Just want to say thank you again. Appreciate you.
Great, thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right. We are on to 7.0, Board of Directors Discussion. Okay, are we calling on Mr. Eric again?
Yes.
To come up here, Ken, and why did you leave?
Yeah, I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Eric back up to, this is a, not a presentation, this is a, we moved this, as you recall, into a discussion.
Okay.
So, that if the board wanted or had any other questions related to this, and so, this is one of the examples that we had. So, Mr. Eric?
And I had a brief statement if I could. Because I think that there's been some questions about the relationship between the statements that you see in here and the presentations that you get and the timing of that. So, if I could for 60 seconds, just kind of particularly for the newer members. The financial statements, what, what you see here, the monthly financial statements, those are a formal official document that take generally five weeks to complete by the time a month is done. So, um, my standard internally is that the accounting team needs by, you know, so, let's take the month of January. They have the month of February essentially to close January.
Right.
Right? And then, I come say, I, I need that report, okay? That's not to say, I don't, I get plenty of spending data and enrollment data and everything about that month well before that, right? And then, consider the fact that there's a cutoff in the timing of you getting documents. We go back two weeks. So, sometimes you see financial statements and you're in the month of January and it's from October and you're wondering what, what, right? And so, oftentimes, the presentations that I provide you have the most up-to-date information that I'm pulling, even though a month hasn't necessarily officially closed. So, if you're seeing that disconnect and you're wondering why, that, that's why. The financial statements themselves, the official statements, um, depending on what day your board meeting falls on in the particular month, um, you can be as much as two months in arrears. But that doesn't mean I'm not presenting to you the most up-to-date information apropos to our revenue expense. So, hopefully, that clarifies what you.
One question, I, I'm not sure I want this under here, 7.03. Our community is really, you know, saying we have all this ESR dollars and everything like that. I'm wondering if you're prepared tonight to tell us how much percentage-wise we've spent on PPE for all, all this and kind of break that down if we could discuss that a little bit.
I'll give it a shot. I wasn't necessarily prepared to answer that question, but this one here. Okay. All right, so if you, and you have this as well, right? So, if you go to the final few pages of the financial statement for December, we've got, I believe, three slides that were just, that will be in every financial statement on ESR. Uh, one of them shows capacity versus claim. That's what you're looking at here. And then, we're showing, um, ESR 1 and ESR 2 detail. So, you wanted to know about PPE, was it, right?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, so, I think PPE is a breakout category. And, I don't know, you know, it, it might be better if I get back to you because I, it might be, be able to break this out in a little bit more detail. But, the idea being that referring to these slides should give you a very good sense at an object level of what the basic pots of money are here. I see one in ESR 1 for about $300,000 for PPE. I know we've spent more than that, so, kind of wondering, um, where it is in ESR 2. Could be in the other category. We have received very large volumes of donations on PPE and that's another factor where we don't necessarily show an expense, but we've received hundreds of thousands of masks through either Puget Sound Educational Service District or.
Would you repeat that because people have been asking about that?
Oh, sure. We started buying masks, um, well ahead of last school year. We were, we, we, we went ahead and just bought masks just to be ready for, uh, when and if we went back to school on breaks from work. Shortly around that time, we started to get phone, I think, uh, Dr. Watts at that time, right around that transition time, we were getting phone calls from several, um, governing organizations saying that they had money to buy masks and would we be interested in donations. I can think of at least a couple, but the, I think the one that was of largest volume was that the Puget Sound Educational Service District, um, donated a very high volume of masks. That didn't mean that we quit buying masks, that we needed masks of a certain type, right? We had, we had guidance from our health team about, we need this many of this type of mask, this many, you know? But, looking at our expenditures at masks would not be a good indication of the number of masks we secured. That, that's what I'm.
Where would you see that then, under vouchers or where?
Well, no, because we didn't pay for them, see?
Okay, so where would you see that?
Well, if I may ask, what is the question you are seeking to answer? How many masks we have or?
What the community is saying is that they're not, they, they want to see something where the, that, that, that those donations came in. They're act, actually asking for public records on that.
Just to know how many masks we received or?
I mean, where would they see that if they saw it on a public record, I guess?
Okay.
Had to ask for.
Well, there would be, um, um, I don't really want to talk extemporaneously about this. Maybe I need to go and line this up, but certainly, I know one of them was on the board record in terms of a donation.
I think what I'd like to do is get back, if there is a record request, um, I think the question is on this data, what do we see? And, uh, Mr. Eric pointed out, that's what we have from a dollar amount. So, I think if you need that other piece, those record requests are going currently.
Okay.
And so, I would hesitate to move into that because that's forthcoming. Um, but we can continue to, to work on the expenditures that directly relate to the.
That much I can provide for sure.
Because PPE is not just masks.
Right, absolutely.
So, I think that's important to note.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, um, because we continue to mitigate.
It's everything, yeah.
Correct, right, yes.
And where could, where can our public on our website find that? Is it easy to find on our website, to go to a link on there?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I can, uh, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I continue to be a little unclear about the question and how I can answer it. Maybe if we, if you worked with the superintendent, I could provide something in writing. I don't want to be on the record getting things wrong here, so.
Okay.
Particularly given that there's a formal request. But certainly, any masks that we purchased, I can obviously, um, produce the records of the purchase. Um, it's just I'm not totally sure what the category is and.
Yeah, and our Civil Rights Club asked that they wanted N95 because obviously, that's supposed to be the top of the market. Did we purchase any of those, do you know by a hand?
We did.
Okay. And how were those distributed equally or?
Um, I'm not part of the distribution team on the masks, so.
We will, we do have that topic.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Forgive me, I'm sorry. We're going, I'm going ahead, I'm asking too much, forgive me.
No, not at all, I appreciate the opportunity to answer your questions.
Thank you.
Are there any others?
Thank you.
Just thank you as always for the detailed report and presentation.
Thank you so much.
All right. So, now, we're on to 7.02 and we had a few more online public comments. Am I not correct, Mrs. Santello?
Isn't this discussion on how we are going to receive public comments?
Yes, so.
Oh, excuse me.
So, this is 7.02.
Oh, you're right. Okay. All right, I'm going to call on, on you interim superintendent to introduce.
Thank you, President Hamada and Vice President Benham. Um, I'd like to invite Mr. Sean Christie, uh, our Executive Director of Organizational Effectiveness. As he's coming up, yes, Vice President Benham recalled board in December, uh, we had a conversation about, so, what are possible options for online comments? And the board engaged in conversations about, here's how we currently do them. Uh, and that led to other questions. Uh, I believe this director, Clark, it's, you know, there's, there's capacity and a lot of different things that need to take place related to this. So, my team's been working hard, uh, under the leadership of, of Mr. Christie and he's here today to give us an update on this, so. Christie?
So, as part of discussion, I know, um, we've attached the, oh, actually, let me start off with, uh, good evening, President Hamada, Vice President Benham, members of the board, interim Superintendent Bella and Miss Santello. So, what I have proposed is part of a dual, um, dual inclusion of what we can do for online public comments. Um, there are a couple of things here that are decision points, but I'm going to walk through, um, the process here from a high level and you can ask questions as we go. So, this was built to be used in full in-person as we are now, as well as hybrid scenarios and full online. So, in any one of those situations, all of the things that I have listed here will work. Um, the decision points here are, um, what happens during the two timed public comment sections? Because, um, as indicated today, uh, once you got through the personal comments, um, there's only six minutes left to do online. So, there's a, a decision point on how do you handle ratios for in-person versus, um, virtual? And then, um, there's another, um, decision point on how do you determine whether or not additional staff are needed in order to administer Zoom and, uh, Zoom, uh, comments? I'm not sure how, at what detail you want me to walk through the actual plan, but, um, those are the decision points.
And, um, did we get a cost to use Zoom or?
So, OSPI extended our Zoom license to where we actually don't have to pay anything. We have extended, um, webinar licensing.
Okay.
So, uh, it's at no cost to the end of the 2023 school year as was last reported.
Have you ever seen an example of a school district already using this in their ratio or anything that you could relate to it?
Yeah, a large part of this, um, this plan, uh, with some modifications for our environment, came from, uh, models of what a couple of other school districts are having. I had a couple of conversations with colleagues at Renton as well as, um, as well as some of our surrounding districts. And they use the same model for their, for their school board meetings or similar model, excuse me. I did have to make some adjustments based on how our school boardman, um, meetings are handled as well as some of the, um, process considerations.
And does this allow for the person to be seen on a screen or just heard?
Uh, they can be seen on the screen, um, obviously, if they have a camera, uh, as part of the Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Um, and it would just be a matter of how do we reconfigure how things are here for the person to be seen.
Great work, thank you.
So, the question that is sitting there is, is the 30-minute limit. Um, as we saw tonight, that 30-minute was not enough. And the question I have is, are we going to extend that 30-minute? Or, we're going to cut it off at 30-minute? You know, whether the person is on Zoom or they're standing right before us.
Well, we have another one too, you know, we have two, right?
At the end of the meeting?
At the end, we have one too, you know, so.
So, we go until we finish?
Yeah.
So.
We've sat here for two or three hours before. I'm telling you, I've been here.
There are people here that have been here since 6 o'clock.
I think that, so, the fundamental question that, um, Mr. Christie is asking, the board needs to think about the ratio.
Right.
As it currently is, and if we do move into what Mr. Christie is proposing here, it's going to take some modifications. It may require us to have that conversation about that. However, back to what was asked was, what would it take for us to do this? He shared that. And so, taking questions, thoughts on, or we are, we also looked at other districts. This is what we, we were going to do. And capacity is, uh, something that we need to think about. But, this is where we are right now. If you want to share anything more, Mr. Christie, of where we are at this point?
Yep, so, um, what I included in the using a ratio portion is just an example of how some of the minutes can be used. So, just to help with the decision-making, um, in terms of what can be done. Past that, uh, we have, um, detailed administration documents for whoever is going to be doing the administration as part of that work during the meeting so they can be clear on how to move people in and out, how to, um, instruct, uh, public on, um, what pieces they need to know in order to, um, use their time well. And so, how we can move people in and out, how, uh, we, uh, register those types of things. That's on a separate document that, um, the administrators would have.
And are you saying, um, one of the questions with the Zoom can, it's not time limits, this licensing, right?
Yeah, the, there's no time limits on the licensing. It's a, it's called a webinar license, um, and that's to allow actually the public comment part.
And how fast, if we would decide to go with this, can we implement this? I mean, how long does it take other than training our people and stuff to do it?
Uh, so, for the administration piece, um, that can. So for the administration piece, that can be turned up quickly. But the other consideration is the second portion of the cost is estimated staff cost for two staff to administrate for the online process.
Yeah.
So it'd just be a matter of who is responsible for that, and then training, especially if they're, you know, internal staff, and then having some conversation for that. But in terms of time, I think that's what will probably take the longest, again, depending on staff and staff availability.
And maybe this was out of your scope, but do you have an idea what the extension of the cost would be?
Could you, question, sorry?
I mean, how much was, how much is it going to cost us if we decide to implement this in salaries, do you know?
It depends on the classified staff member and their overtime cost. If it, again, if it's an internal staff, they will have overtime cost. And it's kind of hard to estimate because I'm not quite sure which staff members would be doing the work.
Okay. Okay, I'm not trying to. I'm just thought maybe you had that off the top of your head, and I appreciate that. Any other questions?
I mean, we can't make a decision until we know the numbers, right? How much it's going to cost the final, you know, that's, that's what will either decide whether we say yes or we say otherwise.
Oh, I think we need to discuss this further in a later date. Oh, I'm sorry, Director Clark?
Well, I have a, a concern of, of, um, clearly, if you're on a computer and you're zooming in, your facial identification is strong and direct. But because of the way we align cameras here, if you are in fact at the podium, you don't enjoy the specificity of expression and motion and whatnot. And I'm wondering whether we're not going to have to address that sometime.
Okay, help me to, I'm not sure I understand that.
Ever been to Kent City Hall?
Yeah, of course, I did, you know that.
And that's the point. They master that by an assigned room with cameras that can be zeroed in to the speaker.
So do I hear you saying, Director Clark, that could, people could be upset if there's not equal visibility or?
Yeah, I mean, that, the, the, there are various ways to express yourself, and distant cameras lose that. And, you know, I mean, just as simplistic as it sounds, if I wanted to hold up a pink piece of paper because it represents fill in the blank, on Zoom, that's evident, and I can bring it closer to focus him. You can't do that here.
So you don't think it's equitable, are you saying?
That is correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, and any other discussion?
I'm okay with this just being as an option, like, I do want to see the cost, but this is what we asked for, so.
Yeah.
I like to see this, and I like to see all the consideration put into this. I look forward to looking at the costs and then hopefully voting on this next time we meet.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good summation of.
Yeah.
The dollars.
And again, that was our purpose for today, is bringing back where are we? What's the capacity? What we hear is just some cost estimates. We're also going to have to engage in some of the ratio conversations in those pieces so that we can get, as Director Clark mentioned, make sure we're providing community with equal access and opportunity as it relates to this implementation of this model. So we'll be back to you with that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, appreciate your time on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christie.
All right, we're on to 7.03, and I'm going to call on interim Superintendent Vella to introduce our next speaker.
Thank you. President Hamada, I'd like to introduce Mr. Randy Heath, our interim chief of school operations and academic support for the COVID updates discussion, and he will introduce other guests.
Right, good evening, President Hamada, Superintendent Vella, members of the board, Ms. Santello. We're going to give you some COVID 19 updates, and we're going to kind of start with some general information, and then the main topics that we have under this update are COVID testing, COVID dashboard, and PPE. And then you'll have an opportunity to ask questions on any of those. We'll kind of stop in between each of them, ask some questions, and then any other questions that you may have. And with me tonight is also Lindy Baron, who is our, in charge of health services in our district and has been an integral person in this whole pandemic, and we could not have done it without her. So I'm so pleased that I was part of a team that hired her a number of years ago because she's been invaluable. All right, we had a dramatic surge in COVID-19 cases that occurred over the winter break and into the first weeks of January. The surge experienced in the Kent School District was similar to the experiences that districts in our neighboring communities, our counties, and our states all over the state saw. We, everybody saw the same thing, basically. The surge necessitated school and district staffs to work long hours as we tried to keep up with the contact tracing, the communication with parents, and the communications with public health. Myself, I was getting emails at sometimes after midnight from the person standing behind me right here. And so I know people were working extremely long hours to try to keep up. Thankfully, as part of this, we were able to add some additional staff during that time and the, and some additional COVID tracers, and some administrative assistant help was able to be brought on to try to keep up with the paperwork aspect of this. At the height of the surge, the first three weeks of January, we necessitated the closing of 25 classrooms because of COVID infections. The good news is that the new cases of COVID infections are coming down, and as of today, we have only two classrooms closed, and they are set to resume in-person learning on February 11th. We have not closed any classrooms since January 31st. It just, and we just went and checked right before this meeting to make sure that the whiteboard was, was clear and that we had no, no, no new ones come in. So that's kind of the general. Okay, um, we're going to jump into COVID testing because there has been a lot of questions that have been posed to you, there have been a lot of questions that have posed to us in the district, we've talked to many people around these concerns. The Kent School District entered into an agreement with Supreme Labs this past fall as the primary way to meet testing requirements for two main groups in the Kent School District. Non-vaccinated athletes participating in close contact sports, as this was a requirement of WIA for these sports to continue. We are also looking for a testing option for the KSD employees who had been granted a medical or religious exemption from receiving the COVID-19 vaccination. Those were the two main focuses when we were trying to find a lab to do our testing. As we started testing those groups, we realized that we had some capacity to also open it up to other families and students and, you know, family members of staff members and, and open up those sites. And we were able to meet that demand up until winter break. Then Supreme Lab was, uh, so Supreme Lab was chosen for some very key factors in why we went with this group. They were offering a program that was at no cost to the district and no cost to the individual receiving the tests. We wanted to make sure no one was paying for any of the testing that they were needing to have. They also provided, they were a company that would provide all personnel. We would not have to use our own staff to do this testing, and so they were prepared to do all personnel and provide all supplies. They were also, one of the key factors here is they were able to test at multiple sites. We knew for equity's sake, we could not have our athletes going to two or three sites in the district to get their testing. We needed to provide those testing at the site of the school. This company was able to set up sites at all six of our middle schools and four of our comprehensive high schools to meet the needs of our athletes. This testing was largely successful up until winter break. Supreme Labs, like many labs around the local area, state, and nation, experienced significant issues, meeting the surge in the testing that occurred the first two weeks of January. This was made worse by winter weather conditions in our area that impacted the courier services that were getting the tests to the labs. And to make things even worse during that time, the lab itself faced a large-scale COVID outbreak that impacted 60% of their workforce. And so add all those factors together, and there were problems. The Supreme Labs did decline our invitation to present at the school board meeting tonight, but they did give us an official statement that I shared with the board last week in the Board Weekly. Supreme Labs has been responsive to the concerns brought by the district and shared steps they were taking to improve. There's a team of us who meets weekly with Supreme Labs on a, on a conference call, and we immediately discuss any issues that are going on and work towards solutions. They also shared with us that the decision to move, that, um, that if there was a decision to move to another lab, they would not be leaving us high and dry, and that they would help transition to a different lab if they felt like this was what was needed. While having these conversations about all of this, we received new guidance from OSPI changing the testing requirements for athletes. The directive changes the guidelines from three times a week testing for all athletes in close contact sports to testing only on days of competition and only with a rapid test. So we were no longer able to use lab testing for this requirement. Thankfully, at the same time, we were starting to get a more regular supply of rapid tests that were being provided to us through the, through the state facilitated through the Peterson ESD. So we have been able to get those rapid tests from that source, and we have been using them with our athletes since this new guidance came, came into play. So they are no, the athletes are no longer using the lab testing. We have asked, uh, we asked at that time that Supreme Labs paused on our conversations around transitioning services until we could fully understand the impact of the athletes no need, no longer needing this testing. What we have witnessed so far in the last couple of weeks is that a, a very much smaller number of people are accessing the lab testings at each of the sites. And given these factors, we're really looking and exploring what are options and having a new plan in place moving forward that we will continue to keep you updated as we craft that new plan. So that is our testing update. So if you have any questions about that aspect, we're ready to answer those questions now before we move to the next topic. Yes?
I was asked, I was asked by a community member, why don't we use the rapid testing for the entire district?
Right. That was discussed early on. There was not a steady supply of free rapid tests that was available to us back in the fall. There's also the realization that rapid tests are not as accurate as the lab tests, and so we were looking for the most accurate at the time that we could, yeah, have access to.
Thank you. I just wanted that on the record so people know.
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I guess I have a question too. Like, there was questions about, like, the Attorney General investigating fraudulent testing companies, and I was trying to do some Googling and whatever about Supreme Labs. I don't really find them connected, but I just wanted to know if you had any information, like, was Supreme Labs involved in some of that? I know a lot of people are very upset by the things that you mentioned, like delays and whatnot, but that's not necessarily, I don't think, because of this lawsuit or whatever the Attorney General is investigating, so can you?
Yes, that was, that was a totally separate case, as far as I've seen no connection to Supreme Labs. I outright asked them about any kind of lawsuits or anybody being investigating their company. They absolutely said, you know, no. You know, I think some of the problem is the first time that some, a lot of our community accessed that testing site was right when they were having their most trouble. So if their only experience is what they experienced right there, and they hadn't been signed up and doing testing back in the fall when they were getting regular results back, I could see where they might question the, the, you know, is this a legitimate company? And it, 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 there was never any indication up until this point that they were not, and so I couldn't find nothing other than people would send me links and other things from the web. I'd follow those links, and really what it would be, would be online reviews of people saying, I'm dissatisfied, but no, like, news story or anything that would lead us to believe there was any fraudulent.
Uh, thank you. Like, it was very jarring seeing those pictures of orange bags full of specimens just thrown about, and so I'm glad that didn't happen to us.
Right.
I guess my last couple of questions is about who's administering the rapid test right now, and what's the workload like for the people doing that?
Right, right now it is being handled at the school level by athletic, led through the athletic director at each of these schools, along with the coaches and the, sometimes the athletic staff that, that are on site. One thing that, um, someone, uh, if a student has had COVID under these new guidelines within, they do not need to test for another 90 days. So, so many of our athletes actually were, were, were infected with the COVID, they actually, so they're not even having to test all of their, their, their players. And it's only on actual match days. So that also cuts down the number of days that they need to test.
Director Clark, anything? Um, I have a, oh, I always have questions. Sorry. And because, you know, this was, this was a hot topic on, hot gossip, or whatever you want to call it, on, on social media that, and I could see if I went into a testing site and people were not there, there were tons of people close together. I think the combination, like you said, was just like everything meeting at once, and it just blew up, and, and it was difficult. I wonder if you could, because everybody seems to think that we're the only ones that can't do anything right.
Right.
I'm not saying that's true. I'm saying, do you have anything to compare it with other districts? How this happened in other districts that you might share with our, our public and that we were not alone in being, you know, having all this hit at once, their employees weren't showing up, you know, and all that for even testing, you know?
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, part of the reason we had so many people at our sites that were unexpected on those first few days when we returned from winter break was that they couldn't get into a testing site anywhere. I had family members, I had friends that were trying desperately to make appointments at any of the sites that were your, your ones that just maybe a month before, you could just jump right on and make an appointment and you were, you were seen. And so people were looking for anywhere to get tested, and that's when they kind of all showed up and at our sites, and we did not expect all those people to show up that, that first week back from January. And so we, we weren't prepared. When we found out that we were starting to see the crowds that we were seeing on those first few days, we immediately worked to try to get additional safety officers to stay later on those days at those sites to help try to manage some of the crowds that were there. The other piece to that was just that we were just starting up because right before OSPI changed it to this different testing requirement for athletes, right before winter break, they changed it to not just students who were unvaccinated in close contact, it was all athletes in close contact, and it, they changed it from two days a week to three. So we asked our testing company to basically ramp up and add an extra site at every single one of those. And so what that meant was that that was the first day on work of a lot of the people they had just hired to do that. So all, it really was a perfect storm those first few days. And, you know, the, as far as other districts, yes, I've heard incidentally, I mean, when I went to pick up rapid tests at the Peterson ESD, um, there were some other people from other districts that were picking them up, and we were all kind of commiserating about how we were, were hit so hard and that we were struggling with that, so.
Another thing that some people mentioned that they were, they were, they're, they were being billed for these tests, $350, is there any?
No, the, the insurance companies are being billed. That is the way it works at all of the testing sites. When I've gone in a community testing site before, I've given my insurance company and they, and they.
Okay.
They bill for those tests. That's how they're able to provide it free. But one of the things that we made sure with our testing company from the very beginning is if a student or staff member did not have insurance, that they would not be charged.
Okay.
And they said, no, they had funding through, um, as, basically through, not as And they said, no, they had funding through, basically through, not as from the American Rescue, you know, the federal money that they can get relief money to pay for anybody that did not have insurance. So, they committed. And I followed up on a few of the claims of people who said, and it was all like they knew someone or they heard someone. I could not find anyone that had actually been charged anything. So, if people out there that are listening have been, please contact me directly because I will follow up with the company.
That's excellent. Some of our, you know, our civil rights kids were asking, you know, how could we possibly keep our schools open with a population of a high school with 2,000 kids? And, you know, I've been in KM several times during the lunch and all that. How do you think that really affected our ability to, you know, keep these schools open? Did you see that that was an impossible thing to keep going, or the kids felt terribly unsafe during that, or?
No, that's not the widespread report that we have gotten around that. Yes, I mean, I think a large building like our comprehensive high schools, it is a bit of a struggle, especially at certain times during the day to maintain that social distancing. But I think what you see, just like in the general community, there are some people that are very conscious about social distancing, wearing their masks and staying apart, others who don't necessarily believe in all that and maybe, you know, don't do it as well. And so, we see those same things in our schools, and it's taking our staff reminding constantly people, you know, remember, mask needs to be up, remember, try to stay apart in the area, those types of things. So, it is a constant reminder that staff in these schools are having to do.
And our kids brought up, you know, with the civil rights class again, or club, that they wanted to see a nurse in their high school full-time. I mean, could our, could our Esser funds have covered something like that now, or was that even a?
Let's, let's get through the rest of this, and then we'll get to some of these.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No problem. So, let's, let's jump over to the COVID dashboard. First off, during the surge, and so, as you know, there was a period of time, the COVID dashboard is not on the website currently. During the same surge in January, cases led to some significant staff shortages that we experienced as a district in January. And a decision was made to temporarily remove the dashboard from the district website. This decision was made because we had to prioritize the work of contact tracing, contacting parents, communicating with Public Health and others, and the dashboard required a manual entering of data. And so, with limited staff, being overwhelmed with cases, we made some strategic decisions that what was more important? Was it more important to do this work of contact tracing and the communication, or was it more important to keep the update, the data dashboard updated? The decision was made to do the other. And so, instead of having not up-to-date information on our dashboard, we felt it was wiser to just temporarily halt the dashboard and take it down so that we, people were not getting a false understanding of what was going on. We have now, just within like the last day or two, we have gotten all caught up even back to those first days in January, because we only started prioritizing the most recent ones and getting those in. And so, we're all caught up, and we believe that this dashboard should be back up by the end of the day on Monday. That is our goal, and we believe everything is pointing to us being able to do that. So, that will be back up. Anything on the dashboard that you have, any questions?
No, I know there was a lot of complaints about, why do we even have that? It's solely inaccurate. And, and again, we're not super people. And explaining that to me makes, you know, we have to prioritize if we only have so many people to do it.
Yep.
I appreciate that answer. Thank you.
Okay. Next, it's the PPE, and as you were asking, personal protective equipment, as you were asking Ben, I was like, I got some of those answers. So, we're going to break it into both staff and students. PPE for staff, we continue to provide PPE, surgical masks or N95 masks for staff that are required to have this higher level of protection related to the risk level of their job. Early on, that, those guidelines were given to us about what qualifies as a staff member that needs this extra level, and we have provided that from the very beginning. In addition, we continue to provide PPE to staff, this enhanced PPE to staff that request a higher level. So, some have come in and said, well, we would like a higher level, and we have provided that to them. Supplies have been sent to each health room on a quarterly basis to cover the above PPE needs. We anticipate the final supply order will be sent to the building to cover the remainder of the school year approximately April 15. But as we've said before, we are constantly monitoring that. If that is not the last order that we need, then we will, we will have another order. And so, that is being monitored not only by Lindy, but by people in finance and purchasing that are doing that work as well. For students, we have both disposable youth and adult-sized masks and cloth masks and adult-sized masks that are provided to the building upon request. Requests are made to the district COVID coordinator, who normally delivers to the building within one to two days. So, each building needs to be watching their supply. When they see it is going down low, reaching out, and within a day or two, we get that. If they, someone called up desperate and said, "We're totally out," someone would immediately get in the car and drive over there and get them there. We currently have 95,000 adult masks and 8,500 youth masks available, 60,000 adult disposable masks, and 46,000 youth disposable masks. So, we've got both cloth and disposable that are just there, ready to be used. And we continue to monitor and supply that. I want to emphasize that at no time during the school year have we not had masks available. We've heard some of that on social media, that there's not masks out there, we're not, that's, that's.
Yep.
We've never had a shortage, so. Okay. So, I think you had a question, is there anything about the PPE?
I have a specific question about, like, there's new guidance about cloth masks and to wear them with disposables. So, when we're giving those out, we're updating students and about double masking if they're going to wear a cloth mask or wearing N95s or whatnot, right? Am I correct on that?
So, as far as I know, and maybe Lindy can speak to this, that is just kind of, some people are recommending, that has not been guidance that has come out, am I?
Correct. It's not guidance from the Department of Health at this point.
Right.
Well-fitting masks is what they're recommending. So, snug on the sides, under the chin, open enough.
So, you know, but once again, parents, you know, are going to need to make some of those decisions for their students. If it's not guidelines that are required, that they can't use cloth masks, and the parents want their kids to use cloth masks, and they send them, since the guidance isn't that you can't, we, we don't feel like we should say that they can't either.
I was just curious, just because I got sick from my classroom, of course, and I was told this because it was a cloth mask from our school nurse. So, I was just curious, and I don't remember her saying it was guidance or whatnot, but she was saying to double mask or just wear N95s. So, I was just kind of curious about that.
Okay. Any other on the PPE?
Do you know anything about, they were, they were asking about filters too, that they said we weren't changing our filters or something?
Well, Gordon's here. I don't know if Gordon, if you want to come up and?
I appreciate this. I'm not trying to be a problem, but I know our community's been just up in arms about this, so.
Yesterday evening, President Madoff, Board, Superintendent, Mr. Intel. So, the question is, are we changing our filters? Is that what the question is?
Yeah, and do we have the right filters and?
Yes, we do. We have updated every HVAC unit that can have a MERV 13 filter has those. Other ones, we've updated to the highest level that the unit can sustain. In classrooms and spaces that don't have the MERV 13s, we've added the portable HEPA filters. And we last month got a donation from Public Health for some more HEPA filters, and we were distributing those to nurses' office, front office areas, areas of higher exposure, like SC classrooms and kindergarten, you know, places where it's hard for students to have their masks on all the time. So, that's how we're addressing that at this time.
Appreciate that too, because I know that, that answers it for me. And I have one question. They were saying that window, that all these school buildings should leave their windows open.
No, that is not correct.
That would actually be better, and they didn't understand why they couldn't do that.
Our guidance, and it's a little confusing because some of the, you know, the information that people says, open your windows and doors, and that's really designed for a space that does not have an engineered HVAC system like your home, you know? So, we have, if you're opening your windows and doors, you're circumventing the MERV 13 filter or the other filters that are in the room. We also made the decision not to do that because of safety and security. You know, it's our policy to keep doors unlocked for, you know, active shooter and intrusion and safety of, you know, staff and students. So, that's not our, our message to?
Yep.
Students, or, you know, to schools.
Appreciate that. Thank you. That makes sense.
Thank you, Gordon.
All right. I want to go back to a question that you asked earlier around the nursing support. And so, I'll let Lindy actually kind of talk about how nursing services are distributed out to the schools so that there's a better eye there.
These are our kids. They want answers.
They want nurses. We do provide a nurse to every school at least two days a week. And then, based on, high school is different. We provide three days a week at a high school. And then, based on need, health plans, basically acuity levels of what's going on in the school, we add more days. In general, we do have a couple of schools that have full nurse coverage, but it's basically due to a health condition for something we cannot delegate. It has to be a licensed nurse that provides whatever that care level is. I will tell you that I have had a nurse pool open since last spring. I can't hire them. There's a nursing shortage. There's a big discrepancy between working nine months in a school at that salary versus what you can make 12 months in a hospital. So, finding nurses is extremely difficult, and that's across the board. Everybody's saying the same thing. So, I have gone to, I do have a couple of agency nurses, just so that we have coverage. And I will say that right now, we have coverage in all of our buildings, which is good news because we did not. I was even covering a school probably for about three months, I was covering River Ridge because we had no nurse. So, we now have full coverage across the board.
Can I ask a follow-up? I don't know if this is for you or someone else. I know there's a bill in the state legislature about increasing nursing. I'm just kind of, that hasn't been finalized, but do we know what number that will be? How many nurses that would bring into our district if it passes?
It's, I don't believe it's going to be full-time each building for that funding, but it's going to up us from where we are at, what, 3.2 nurses? So, anything is better than that.
Anything's better than that.
Currently, I have like FTE of like 23.
And the state only covers 3.2, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Same story.
But then, we got to be able to find them. That's, that's going to be the biggest issue.
Yeah.
I'd also want for the board to take note of a couple of things Lindy mentioned. So, yes, nursing, we need nurse. But our needs for students that are higher risk, that she mentioned, we have individual IHPs when the needs are higher. So, when we look at the data, that's how Lindy and her team take a look at the needs and how much time is offered at schools. The needs of our students that are medically fragile, for example, is also important for us. So, you know, Lindy, thank you for what you do. I know, because I remember having to do that data work, but I can tell you that with students that need to have, and she mentioned, a licensed nurse, that's critical. It depends on the need of the student. It's not simply where I'm handing out, you know, taking a temperature, doing something like that. We have to make sure we utilize the current FTE nursing we have based on the needs that are out in those schools, including our high schools. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. And we do also, every health room has a health tech.
Yep.
And health techs are six hours a day. That was something that was up this year from four at the elementary school. So, for the majority of the school day, not only is there a nurse, but there's a health technician that works under the nurse's license.
See, that's great. I'd like to hear that, actually.
So, the health tech is not certified nurse, it's just?
Not a certified nurse. Basically, they are first aid CPR trained, and then they have additional training from the nurse as far as the workings of the health room.
Nice.
And what the nurse can delegate to them, such as medication administration, some oversight on diabetes, things like that.
Is that Esser, or is that what we currently, like what we always?
That's what we currently have. That is not Esser.
Oh, nice.
And I can share that we've gradually upgraded that. It used to be two to three hours in offices, and we learned over time the need has increased. And so, thank you to our board, and we increased that to a full-time, a six-hour.
Yeah, because it used to be two to three.
Yep.
On the days the nurse wasn't there.
Right.
Now, it's even when the nurse is there, they're there six hours.
And that would be at KM too, then?
KM, yes. Now, we have had issues with hiring also health technicians.
Yep.
Okay.
Go figure. So, in addition to covering River Ridge, they had no health tech the whole time. So, we do, you know, we do have that now back up. I believe all but one school has a health tech, and that's just because it's a recent situation. So, but KM has one. Unfortunately, we're going to look for another one because they're leaving us. So, but yes, KM, six hours, all the high schools have been six hours for several years. And it was the elementary and middle school that just went to six hours this last school year.
Wow.
Wow.
I'm learning. I hope the kids are listening.
Yeah. And I do want to state actually that, you know, the board, the board, the various boards that have sat in these seats throughout the years have, I believe, valued nursing and has always, so at least since I've been here and I've heard the history before, it has always provided significantly more nursing support than what the state has funded them. And I had just come from a district in which we were funded by the state for one nurse, and we only had one nurse, and they were covering the entire district. So, when I arrived here, that was great to see the level of support that was there. And so, and I know that another question that came from some of the KM students was about mental health supports. And unfortunately, just like what Lindy was talking about in terms of trying to hire nurses and having none to be found, that is the same, you know, struggles. And we've shared a little bit about that with you to the board and why we've looked at other options like the telehealth and the tele-mental health and all of that, just because there's such a shortage. So, I love to hear that the legislature is thinking of adding all these additional supports, but then they've also got to find a way to maybe train, get people to get trained in these professions as well, and then maybe even address the monetary issues about why it doesn't make sense sometimes financially for them to work in a school district as opposed to, you know, elsewhere, so.
Well, I for one have found this very helpful. It's what our public asked for. I wanted to give you enough time to give this great presentation, and it answered a lot of questions that I've seen out there, and I really appreciate all the hard work you've done. It's been unprecedented in time, so thank you again for coming tonight and being here till 9 o'clock.
Thank you.
Alrighty. All right, we're on to 8.0, discussion and approval. We have 8.01 through 8.07. I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve 8.01 project budget closeouts.
I second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify your right hand and say nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. 8.02 Kent Phoenix Academy Window Glazing Replacement Bid, Acceptance and Award of Contract. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Kent Phoenix Academy Windows, Window Glazing Replacement Bid, Acceptance and Award Contract.
I second.
Discussion. It is been moved and seconded that the Kent Phoenix Academy Window Glazing Replacement Bid, Acceptance and Award of Contract be approved. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising your hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to 8.03 SBIRT Grant Application. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we had accept a JENA item.
I move that we had accept agenda item 803 on school board-based screen, brief intervention and referral to grant renewal.
I second.
Discussion. Why we're quiet tonight? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising their right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. 8.04 School Improvement Plan, Acceptance. In a wonderful work session we had on that tonight, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve 8.04 School Improvement Plan, Acceptance.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I just want to say, like, I went through all of these and just kind of, I don't read them in depth, I'm sorry, I know y'all work hard on this, but I perused them all because there's a few and I'm just really glad to see a lot of that. I know that, that people in the schools are working hard and that this document and piece of paper doesn't show all the hard work that's going on in the schools, but I appreciate seeing a snippet of the work that's happening in all of our schools here.
Yes, I, I concur.
Director Clark?
Yeah, the school improvement plan's presentation that we had prior to the, the board meeting is critically important and I wish it had been done at a, a full board meeting for, because it deals with some of the things that in fact, we heard some of the folks questioning the process tonight where they were suggesting that we need to walk away from WASD and OSPI and go to local control. And when you go to look at the issues of equity, you can get into a moral argument about, you know, what's the best approach, et cetera. But the bottom line is the state is very clear on that and OSPI has been very clear on that. And those school improvement plans say that we will in fact divide students out into various segments to assure that they are progressing at a, an approved rate and that there are resources brought to bear to make up for some of those inequities to assure that that takes place. And I mean, that's the very core of what public education is about. And so I, obviously I'm going to vote in favor of the motion, but the point is, is there's a tremendous amount of work that's very specific to the groups of students that that particular building is handling. And there are some very unique challenges there and they are being addressed. It's not a perfect system and heaven knows, everything from COVID to people moving has an impact on what you're trying to accomplish. But the point is, the buildings are working towards a very specific goal and, and it makes a difference.
And I, I, I just want to totally agree and very well said, Director Clark, that those plans are so unique and so important. And the work session tonight, I hope our public actually looks at that a little bit and sees what we're trying to do with our kids. Any other further discussion on this tonight? All right. All those in favor of our school improvement plan acceptance signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying aye or nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to 8.05 Kent Elementary Digital Reader Board Replacement Contract to Dectronics Incorporated through KCDA. I'll entertain a motion.
I ask, move the agenda item 8.05 Kent Elementary Digital Reader Board Replacement Contract to Digitronics Inc. through KCDA.
Discussion.
I guess my only discussion is I notice it's paid through the Kent Elementary budgeted funds and I'm just, I know that sometimes a PTA pays for it, et cetera. I just feel like, just to put it out there in the world, I mean, I'm obviously going to vote for this, but I feel like that sometimes it's not very equitable, like who pays whether it's building funds or PTA, et cetera. I just want to put that out into the world that I recognize that, I hear that, I see that. And that there's got to be a better way, but they need their, they need their sign, so I'm putting that into the universe.
Mr. Buzzard.
Yeah, absolutely. I, I just invited myself up here. I'm so sorry to say, President Pato, members of the board, Israel and Ms. Santella, I, I want to bring some light to this because this is, it's, it's very important to this district. We have 44 commu, 44 complexes in this district. This is the 45th complex. We don't have a digital sign. We're working on that. I have, I have dollars that we'll put one out here very soon. This will not be an issue anymore because we are proposing, we are getting ready to propose this as part of an ongoing improvement in our school district that every school needs a digital reader board. The reason with that, it all goes back to safety and security. Think about it. In the COVID, if the school was closed, people could just drive by and see a big board that says, the school's closed. COVID, please don't come in. Even though they see cars in there. So it's, it's something that we are working on, we will be bringing this to you.
Thank you.
I'm glad I spoke into the universe then. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's good to know. Thank you for inviting yourself.
Yes.
We appreciate that. All right. And so that gives us any further discussion? Okay. We're ready for a vote. All those in favor of Kent Elementary Digital Reader Board Replacement Contract to Dectronics Incorporated through KCDA signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by raising their hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. 8.06 Second Reading and Approval of Policy 6950 Construction Contracts and Change Order. I'll entertain a motion.
I move to adopt 806, Policy 6950 Construction Contracts and Change Orders.
Second.
Discussion.
We, if I can, I mean, we've had this discussion before, so.
There we.
And, and an in-depth discussion of the change orders. So I'm just, I'm just acknowledging that this is not being passed over. We, we've been there.
Thank you, Director Clark. That's, that's important too. Okay, I'll call for the vote on 8.06 Second Reading and Approval of Policy 6950 Construction Contracts and Change Orders. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising your hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to 8.07 Third Reading and Approval of Resolution 1618 Kent School Board's Commitment to Ensure That Our Schools Are in, Are an Equitable and Welcoming Place for All Students and Staff. I'll entertain a motion.
I move 8.07 Third Reading and Approval, Resolution 1618 Kent School Board's Commitment to Ensure That Our Schools Are an Equitable and Welcoming Place for All Students and Staff.
I second.
Discussion.
I'm very happy to see that the changes that were recommended at our last meeting were added to this document. I looked at this. I think that this is great. I really appreciate all the time and work that we spent on this. And just a reminder, things that we saw before, before, a piece of paper doesn't create a welcoming environment. So it's the philosophy of our school district that we take this piece of paper and turn it into action and I look forward for us to do that as a district.
Further discussion. I just want to add, we worked a lot of this on our board retreat. It's not something we're going to go into tonight. We did some great work with this. We did accomplish a lot and I'm very glad to see this up for approval tonight. So if nothing further, I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor of third reading and approval of Resolution 1618 Kent School Board's Commitment to Ensure That Our Schools Are an Equitable and Welcoming Place for All Students signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. We're on to 9.0 Consent Agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
For the entire.
Well, I move that we approve consent agenda 9.02 through 9.03.
Second.
Discussion. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda 9.01 through 9.03 signify by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by raising your right hand and saying nay. Abstentions, the motion carries. We are on to 10.0 Final Communication From the Audience. Ms. Santella, and there, there we are. I forgot where that went.
Thank you, President Hamada, members of the board and interim superintendent Vella. I began the board meeting with two comments from online submission. There are 13 left to read. The next comment was submitted by Jake Rideout. Dear KSD Board of Trustees, thank you for the important work you do for the young people of Kent. As you know, the district is one of the most diverse in the country. In fact, its diversity was the first thing I encountered when I was hired as an elementary school librarian late last August. From written material to required trainings to the district's overarching goals, equity and inclusion are an enormous part of the mission of KSD. It's one of the reasons I chose to move and work here. However, there is one major group missing from nearly all of the language of diversity, the LGBTQ plus community. As a queer person myself, this was a glaring omission. I had to wonder if it was simply an oversight or if its absence extended to district culture and policy. I strive to create a safe space for queer youth. This means first and foremost, bringing queerness out of the shadows and treating it as a fact of life. Having books on the shelf that represent the people who exist in the LGBTQ community is the most basic way to acknowledge the presence and value of that community. Books that include gay parents, trans or non-binary children and adults and yes, young teens struggling with their sexuality as their bodies and minds undergo the massive transition that is puberty, all play a role in our acceptance of queerness. These books are often the safest way for those young people to process their identity. That is our role as educators, to provide safe guidance through the rough seas of youth. I was shocked and ashamed to hear of the removal and further censorship of the LGBTQ plus books from the library at Cedar Heights Middle School. The recent wave of book banning feels like an extension of reactionary politics sweeping through our country and a contradiction in the mission of Kent School District. As a former middle school teacher and librarian, I can attest firsthand to the value of books like the ones that were removed. Students that age are children in some ways and ready for frank adult discussions in others. And it varies widely from one to the next. Not every student is ready for a book like Jack of Hearts and Other Parts, but for some, that book is exactly the conversation they're looking for. That's the purpose of a library. Have a book for everyone and let the patrons choose what's right for them. Removing a category of books according to one person's preference does a disservice to everyone that category serves and is discriminatory to boot. Is that the legacy we want to leave for future generations of students? The next comment was submitted by Chad Worchester. I'm writing on behalf of the principal at CHMS. It seems that some people have lost sight of the fact that certain school reading material was removed due to its explicit and graphic nature and have instead solely taken issue with the principal who has exercised her sense of duty and common sense regarding the emotional welfare and safety of the students. While on school property, the students are under the watchful eye of the staff. Furthermore, they are far removed from their familial structure and what they may or may not be typically exposed to inside the confines of their home. I would rather any principal err on the side of caution unless, of course, those who are in opposition to the principal's decision feel so deeply impassioned as to sit down with every parent and recite verbatim the excerpts, passages from the books in question and then give the parents the opportunity to provide their feedback as to the suitable nature of this book. I'm afraid this particular situation is not one of those change with the times doctrines. I find, if anything, the librarian's reaction to the principal's decision to be both misguided and alarming and the silence that remains in the manner in which he's responded towards the principal is frankly shocking. The lack of support for this principal, a stellar member of KSD, is shameful. A student at Cedar Heights was gravely concerned about something, a principal valued that student's feelings, swiftly responded as her job description permits and that is that. This was nothing more than a measured and well-intentioned action by the principal that has sadly turned into a malicious debacle within KSD. You should understand that this has compromised a good person's professional and personal life. If this happened to any one of you, please understand that I would equally defend you. If any one of you genuinely care about your colleague and principal, I'd implore you to recognize the emotional damage this incident has caused her. I find that sitting back while this happens to her to be not only confounding but reckless too. In summary, this is a classic example of how dangerous apathy can actually be. The next comment was submitted by Barbara Little. Dear KSD Board of Directors and interim superintendent Vella, I would like to address the issue of book removals that are happening within our own KSD community. As a teacher and parent, I have overwhelming concerns about book removals happening without following our established KSD board policies and procedures. I first heard this story while driving home from my classroom at the end of a workday on NPR's KNKX and was embarrassed to be an employee of a district that once again was in the news for not supporting the equal treatment of all students. As a mother of a LGBTQ student, I can tell you how challenging it is to emotionally, emotionally support a child who is trying to understand their identity and place in society when everywhere they turn, they see people unlike themselves. We would never think to have a library of books centered on only one race, yet it seems that some think it is their right to have only books representing only people who are heterosexual. It is essential that anyone with concerns, no matter their role in a school or our community, follow the appropriate procedures to address concerns. Banning and removing a book from a school library is a violation of our intellectual freedom. Conversations about books are important and necessary. Making decisions without conversations, without reading the materials in its entirety and without a fair process is damaging and harmful. Libraries are places for students for learn, explore, see themselves and inquire. It is our responsibility to be sure our students have access to diverse ideas and choice in materials. A library's role is to provide selection, not to censor materials that a few are uncomfortable with. Our students need us to see them for who they are and one way to do this is filling a library with books that are about our students' intersectionalities, experiences and interest. I ask that you support access to information and intellectual freedom for the benefit of all our students and our community. Thank you, Barbara Little, NBCTE MCLRLC. The next comment was submitted by Bianca Solorzano. I write to show my support to the principal at Cedar Heights. If you knew her, you'd know that she wants nothing but the best for her students. At Cedar Heights, students are greeted by her every morning, chat with her during lunches and are waved goodbye at the end of the day. Her cheer- Her cheer and positive attitude are felt throughout the day, every day. It is sickening to see how people that have no clue of who she is are attacking her character. The fact that a student felt comfortable approaching her, not the librarian, or a teacher, or a counselor, to report this book speaks volumes. Her intent in all this was to support her student and speak out on what she later realized wasn't age-appropriate nor mentally, socially, and emotionally healthy for middle school students. By no means was this ever about banning or targeting a demographic community. Quit trying to make an issue out of something that was never there in the first place. I understand there are parents that will allow their children to read more explicit, mature content. However, let that freedom be decided out of schools. Society is filled with plenty of sexual exposure. Let's not add school libraries to the long list of accessibility. Leave that for YouTube, Netflix, music, not our schools. I would also like to mention the level of disrespect and adult bullying being done by people that so-called claim to be standing by LGBTQ plus rights. As educators and parents, let's be an example to our youth. Let's teach them that when we are fighting to be heard, we are being driven by love and seeking peace, not by expressing hate and reacting to misleading information. Those making false accusations should feel embarrassed that this has become a battle of shaming someone who has never demonstrated malintent and controversy. The Cedar Heights principal will stay committed to following district procedure, which was done to begin with. She will stay firm in advocating for all of her students by continuing to support middle school-age-appropriate LGBTQ plus literature, which was never a doubt, and will stay focused on her purpose of keeping Cedar Heights a developmentally safe and positive learning environment for all that walk through our doors. In closing, I would like K S D to take this opportunity and work in collaboration with librarians and administrators to create a comprehensive list of books that are age-appropriate for each school level. Partnership in this discussion can be beneficial for all parties and will avoid misconstrued information from spreading as it so unfairly did in this situation. To the Cedar Heights principal, you are not alone. The next comment was submitted by Lauren Boone Giovanni Hunt. As you know, C H M S is the center of a recent controversy which started with the purchase of a book titled Jack of Hearts and Other Parts. All student communities should be affirmed, respected, welcomed, and made to feel safe at school. As a school psychologist, I am ethically obligated to ensure that all students, regardless of orientation, race, diversity, religious beliefs, identities, and expression, can attend school in an environment that is safe, accepting, and respectful. Exposing students to sexual and drug-explicit content at the middle school level as found in the Jack of Hearts and Other Parts book must be considered very seriously against its literary merit. I fail to see how this book meets the curriculum goals for sexuality education for twelve- to fourteen-year-old students when compared to the National Association of School Psychologists Position Statement Regarding Sexuality Education. More concerning is how the board and district leadership allowed the narrative about this disagreement to be steered in such an inaccurate and personal direction. On mainstream Twitter, for example, I see threatening and disparaging comments made about members of the C H M S administration. Photos and personal information appear in these threads. At C H M S, I see no evidence of anti-LGBTQ plus censorship or fascist intentions as social media platforms and some employees want you to believe. The district confirmed that the book challenge procedure was followed, yet this continues to be characterized as a book ban. We should be able to disagree and passionately debate for the purpose of crafting the safest and most effective environment for learning without fear of being reported to news networks, blogs, and national organizations with only one side of the story. For the January twenty-sixth board meeting, my colleague at C H M S wrote to share her experience about how this book would have impacted her when she was a middle school student and member of the LGBTQ plus community. While her statement was being read, a board member rolled his eyes, shook his head, and laughed. This type of response from a leader of our school community is, at the very least, unwelcoming and disrespectful. In elementary school, this is called bullying. As a professional and employee of the district, I define this as harassment and intimidation. And he identifies as a member of LGBTQ plus community. Overall, the poor display of leadership by the board and higher administration today has contributed to a toxic and divisive work environment. The K S D leadership needs to take more definitive action to protect employees from personal and damaging rhetoric. If the K S D school environment is to be dynamic and effective, space must be made for a variety of options, a range of diversity of experiences, and consideration of empirical data. The next comment was submitted by Charlotte Anthony. School Board Directors, I submit this statement to the school board after watching the January twenty-sixth school board meeting. What stood out was the book challenge issue. I call into question the professionalism of how this issue was addressed. The public has elected each board member to a position of power to represent the community. To say I was disappointed by the actions displayed would be a great understatement. The way one member of the board physically responded during public statements being read and then verbally responded in their closing report to the views and statements of others was appalling. Having your voice be heard is a part of the reason a person would be elected to a school board. My problem is that members of the community are encouraged to be an active participant in our community, schools, and board meetings. One way to accomplish this is to write statements to be read aloud at the school board meetings. When a person of authority makes faces and gestures that could be interpreted as disgust and judgment at each statement containing opposing viewpoints from their own, they are undermining the process. It did not feel inclusive and supportive as a member of the K S D community. If the facial expressions and physical gesturing weren't enough, it was taken a step further with closing reports. The statements provided by community members were written from their own views, experiences, and perceptions. That is their truth. That is their right. No one should be able to use a position of power with an elected platform to take that away. To tear down others' experiences and perceptions is not why school board members are elected. It was appreciated that other board member, that another board member spoke on the same issue but focused on the importance of policy being followed. That's what this is about. Keep it about following proper policies and procedures, not focused on individuals where the narrative, in my opinion, has been one-sided and made out to be a personal attack. In the days that have followed this board meeting, several articles have been released. I am disappointed to see that one single person has been called out and personally victimized. As a member of the K S D community, I was unclear on the merits of the issue because I had heard more about personal stance and opinion than I did the facts. I encourage members of the board to show more decorum on this matter, or any other, in the future by refraining from responding out of a place of emotion. Maintain a focus on gathering all information, seeking to understand, and reaching out to educate all parties involved. All I heard was blaming and shaming. The next comment was submitted by Robert P. Allred, Ph.D. I want to comment about our school's libraries, including recent challenges to books such as Jack of Heart and Other Parts, and If I Was Your Girl, over the objections of qualified librarians. There are many community members who are concerned that these and similar sex-positive or LGBTQ-themed books are too mature for middle school students. It is critically important to understand that sex education generally, and in my experience with Kent School District specifically, is extremely heteronormative and not inclusive or helpful for LGBTQ youth, many of whom are not out yet and don't have someone safe to ask questions. A book like Jack of Hearts may seem too mature or unnecessarily detailed from that heteronormative perspective, but for many of our LGBTQ students, what other resources or representation do they have? What voices from their community exist on the shelves of their library? And who exactly is making that determination on their behalf? Is it just the voices and sensibilities of cis-het people that get to determine what is too mature for a middle school student, for any student? Or is their voice being heard in this discussion? Are they safely at the table? If a book is too mature for any given student, the best thing we can do is to help them learn how to put down and move on to something that fits them better, a skill that will serve them well for the rest of their life. What we should not do is take it away from others who may want or even need that book and whose voices are far too commonly silenced. Thank you. The next comment was submitted by Carrie Alsop. Dear Board Members, I am writing to request the immediate removal of a book, Jack of Hearts and Other Parts, from Cedar Heights Middle School Library. I was drawn to this cause from social media posts from the librarian at Cedar Heights himself, who is insisting that the principal at the school did not follow the policy when a book is challenged. Upon review of the policies that are referenced, I find that the librarian himself is not following the policy outlined in twenty twenty-one P. Quote, "Suggestions may originate from students, parent, and staff. Those suggestions are considered by the library media staff, who weigh requests, evaluate materials, and select those which fulfill the needs of the instructional program. Selection of materials shall be the responsibility of the librarian with cooperation from the school's professional staff and approval by the principal or program director," end quote. For these procedures, final approval of adding this book to the library needed the approval by the principal or program director. The librarian's multiple posts, interviews with all media, all state that he alone chose the book for the library. Since the policy was not followed, it should not be allowed to remain in the library while its contents are under review. I am absolutely an advocate for the LGBTQ community. I volunteer on LGBTQ committees in our schools, mentor students at Cedar Heights, and am all in favor of increasing the literature of this population I hold dear to my heart. The sexually descriptive content of this book, however, is not appropriate for the ages of students at the middle school. This book should have been approved by more than just the librarian. Perhaps a more rigorous policy needs to be put in place when adding new materials to the public school's library to ensure oversights like this do not happen in the future. We must do better, especially for the well-being and representation of our LGBTQ community. They deserve our, only our absolute best. For the next three comments, I have a statement of information to provide in advance of those. Pursuant to the board's audience participation policy, which states, "The president may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is too lengthy, obscene, or irrelevant. Abusive public comments personally directed towards staff members will not be tolerated. The board as a whole will have the final decision in determining the appropriateness of all such rulings." Redactions have been made to the following three comments. I will read certain sections, and the full redacted comment will be shown on the screen behind me. The board has been provided a copy of these three comments this evening without redaction. This next comment was submitted by Rhonda Mofield. I am writing this in support of the principal at Cedar Heights. The discussion should be about the sexually inappropriate content of the book. A student brought this to admin's attention and was advocating for themselves and how the book made them feel. If you are concerned about the student rights, what about the student that was uncomfortable with the content of this book? This was about a sexually inappropriate book for middle school students. Sexual orientation should not matter. I highly suggest that you read the book. Do you think this should be available in a middle school library? Here are a few excerpts from the book and the pages where they can be found. I'll pause for a moment to allow you to read the excerpts on your own in the bracketed areas featured on both your copy on the screen. Has the board had enough time to read the excerpts? After reading those excerpts, I would like to ask again, do you want your child reading this content at twelve to fourteen years old? The next comment was submitted by Rachel Butler. To the Kent School District and Board Members, the reason the book, Jack of Hearts and Other Parts, is being discussed has long been forgotten and buried in all personal agendas. A student brought this book to the attention of the principal. The student suggested it was not appropriate for middle school due to the amount of graphic, sexual content, and many references to drugs and alcohol in the book he/she found in the C H library. The concerns of the student have been dismissed for a bigger agenda, which was not the issue in the first place. According to K S D policies and procedures, Procedure twenty twenty-one P says, "Incidents of sex profanity and obscenity subjected to a stern test in literary merit and reality." Also, Procedure twenty twenty-P states that materials should be free of obscene or pornographic material. The graphic nature of sexual content and exposure to drugs and alcohol does not have any literary merit and is not appropriate for a library serving twelve- to fourteen-year-old students. Per the C H librarian, which he stated on a recent radio interview, this is a book, he believes, is good for our LGBTQ plus students, might not be for all, but he stands behind it. I question his intent. I'll pause for a moment for the board to read the bracketed area. Don't we want to discourage students having sex with their teachers? What this book does is normalize these situations. Don't our students have enough to deal with? Why is the librarian promoting a sex manual for the twelve- Why is the librarian promoting a sex manual for the 12- to 14-year-old students? When LGBTQ plus books for middle school was Googled, Jack of Hearts and Other Parts did not pull up. There was a long list of books. LGBTQ plus books need to be something our students can relate to. They should not be made to feel they are worth nothing more than sex objects. The true reason this book was brought to the attention of the principal has never been truly represented. It had nothing to do with all the facts, with the fact that it was an LGBTQ plus book, which has been posted throughout social media, newspapers, and radio interviews by the librarian. It was because it was sexually explicit, which apparently isn't that important. All students should be able to find themselves in the library and should be able to expand their thinking and experiences. The next comment was submitted by Jennifer Brown. It has been brought to my attention that an LGBTQ book containing graphic sex is at the Cedar Heights Middle School. I was able to read an excerpt from the book. I'll pause for a moment to read, for the board to read the bracketed area. This is unacceptable for middle school students. As a parent whose children will be attending this school, I think it should be pulled from the library. The next comment was submitted by Justin Brown. It has been brought to my attention that an LGBTQ book containing graphic sex is at the Cedar Heights Middle School Library. This is unacceptable for middle school students, and the book needs to be taken out of the library immediately. The next comment, which is also the last comment for the evening, was submitted by Deanne Duff, MSNRN. I am writing in regard to the book challenge happening at Cedar Heights Middle School, as well as the lack of professionalism displayed during the 12622 board meeting. As a member of the LGBTQ plus community and a mother of three heterosexual children who attended KSD schools and an employee of KSD, I am disappointed that this has been allowed to be turned into a homosexual versus heterosexual literary debate. The age appropriateness of this content, of the content, is the issue here, and quite frankly, I am floored as to why this is even a debate, as the book clearly states the suggested reading level to be 14 and above. Middle schools are not 14 and above. This is factual information. Furthermore, the content in Jack of Hearts and Other Parts is, to me, the normalization of risky sexual behavior between a coach and a student, as well as sensationalizing substance abuse. I would here like to request an explanation as to why the con, as to why content glorifying sexual intercourse between a child and an adult, regardless of race, gender, sexual orientation, is something that is being so diligently fought for as a relatable and necessary book for children to have access to. Is this where we are in the world now, that this type of reading material is to be accepted as what our children need in order to feel at place, at place in society? If this is the case, we have outrageously wronged our children. On 12622, I watched and listened to the KSD board meeting. During the public comments, I watched a member of the board act in such a manner that was not only an embarrassing representation of KSD, but also a disgusting display of bullying. I did not need to have the volume on in order to determine whether or not he agreed with any public comments being read. However, there was one specific comment read to which the same board member dramatically expressed his disagreement. That comment was the opinion of my wife and her personal story that she chose to share, not to be mocked, but to express that the librarian at Cedar Heights does not speak for the entirety of the LGBTQ plus community, nor should this be allowed to be a platform for that debate. This same board member ended the meeting discussing what do they have done to support self-advocacy for students and how important it is for them to have a voice. What if a student had written that? Would the behavior have been the same? What message are we providing our students, their families, and staff in all of this? That is okay to have a different opinion, as long as you're okay with being bullied. That is the final comment for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Antella. Your reading was excellent. I know that's not easy to do, and we greatly appreciate it. We're on to 10.02, Board Reports and Discussion. We'll start with Director Clark.
Well, I'm gonna jump to almost a different topic, actually. The, first of all, in, I, in, I attended the final boys' basketball game for middle schoolers between Matson and Northwood. And I am a former basketball coach. And seeing students involved in a basketball game that scores 80 points for one side, at the high school level, if you simply would read the weekly reports, you'd see is extremely rare. In that particular game, the score was 80 all with two minutes to go. And remember, that's four eight-minute quarters, so you're scoring better than two points a minute. It, it's, the shot clock was wasted in that game, but the, the fact was, seeing them compete at such a high proficient level speaks very highly of the, the instruction and leadership that the respective programs have put together. Clearly, there are some talented people arising. But it was fascinating because it was, it wasn't quite a full gym, but it was as close as you can get. And, and both sides were enthusiastic and supportive, and it was a very positive experience. I bring that up because, among other things, at the high school level, we now are at the end of the winter season, and I just want to mention those schools going on to those higher stations in terms of regional and state tournaments. In terms of boys' and girls' basketball, both Kent Ridge and Kentwood have, both teams advancing to the next level. They go to the districts on this Friday and Saturday. The dis, the district, excuse me, the league meet for gymnastics is actually being held at Kent Lake this weekend. Sadly for the gymnastics, because of the nature of multiple events going on at any given time, and the number of participants, there will be no fans allowed for that particular show. In terms of wrestling, at the girls' regionals going on, we have two from KM and two from Kentwood, and that will be at White River on the second February 12th. In terms of 3A boys' wrestling, going to regionals, KM has nine, Kent Lake has five, and that will be at FOS on the same date, the 12th of February. And in 4A wrestling for boys, Kentwood has 12, and Kent Ridge has nine, and that will be at, at, at Tahoma, also on the 12th. So, I, I, I would be remiss, I, I, I'm yet again, another topic, I, I feel it important that we express what work we do here, and at a workshop last week, this board did approve a resolution entitled Black Lives Matter. Now, I, because we haven't entertained that tonight, I, I, I just want to express a couple of observations. The phraseology often in the media gets immediately drawn into the issues of the criminal justice system and its disparities. This resolution didn't ignore that, but it didn't focus on that. It was much more tailored to what we do in schools, and specifically dealing with the barriers created by racism. So, it's not entirely about what happens to African Americans. Clearly, in the great diversity that this district faces, these types of issues are very broad and, and are continuing challenge to students going forward. So, the board took a position that very simply, we are going to make a commitment to try and deal with some of those issues, and I, the board vote was five zip. That's all I have.
Thank you, Director Clark. Director Farah.
Thank you, President Hamada. I am gonna report that last Friday, it was my first visits, visits to schools, not one, not two, not three, four. How about that? So, I thank you, Interim Superintendent Vella, by, you know, allowing me to come with you. It, it's really one of the, the highlights of my week. It is one of the things I look forward to because my hope is to visit every school in the district, and to see the staff, the, the people who are in charge of our kids. It's, you know, it's beyond what I can describe in words. To see those kids, their faces, and when they see you, and to be able to, you know, answer their questions, you know, as we were coming out, out of the Neely O'Brien School, one of the kids stopped Interim Superintendent Vella and, and asked him, "Are you the president?" And I, I can tell you, and I can tell you, that kid saw himself in Interim Superintendent Vella. And that is, for me, what we're all about. We're making sure that we work every day to make sure those kids succeed, because they are the future leaders. And, and for that kid, that also is achievable goal, to be able to be the superintendent of the Kent School District. We went to the Cadillac of the elementary schools, Covington, and I can tell you, it is the Cadillac. And I was, I was, I was asking, Interim Superintendent Vella, "How come we don't have all, all the schools like this?" And he goes, "We, we need money." And, and, and I, I, I look forward the day that we can make all of our schools become like that, so that we can really serve and have our kids go to classes that they feel comfortable instead of having portables. I want to thank the community, even though it's a little bit early, but the passing of the levy. I can tell you, the, it's one of the things that I was holding my breath on eight o'clock when, they didn't even post it until 8:06. So, so, I was, I was happy to see that, and I literally had to Google, you know, what was the percentage of passing? And then I found out that it passed, so that was, that was great to see that. Again, you know, I just want to say, the staff, you know, you have advocate for the staff here, sitting here, and that is me. I will always make sure, I want to thank you for doing the work that's required. It is 10:10, and you're still here. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Vice President, you know...
Hi, thank you. Kudos again, thanks for the staff for still being here, and staff across the district for all the work that they do. Again, I just think about the work that I do in my district, and I know that educators are working hard, no matter where education you are, like you're working hard this year. So, I appreciate everything you all do. And again, thanks to everyone joining us online, of course. Sometimes I wonder just how entertaining we are to watch, but I'm really glad people are jumping on and getting some knowledge, and that's the purpose of having these public meetings open for people to see. So, I really appreciate people who are watching live or who are gonna watch on YouTube later. I also was very excited that the levy is passing so far. I mean, I'm optimistic, but it's not certified yet. I'm not, I always say, I wait till certification before I celebrate. But as far, as that goes, I really thank the people who voted in favor of it. Since I turned 18, I've voted in every single election. When I was in Idaho, then when I moved here, I immediately registered to vote before I even got my driver's license, because I've always believed in voting, the power of voting, and using your voice, and voted in every election, no matter if it's a special election, school election, whatever, I've voted every single one, because that's important to me. And I really love how accessible voting is in Washington, so I can drop off for mail. Past meetings, we had our board retreat, that was mentioned. I presented at the Rainier Educators of Color Equity Conference on two topics I really care about. One is supporting LGBTQ students of color. The other is how to use pronouns to promote safer spaces in the classroom, and both sessions were great and well-attended, and the other sessions I attended were amazing. And the Reckon Group really does a great job, and I know that the Educators of Color attend that and present at that as well. I was also gonna mention the Black Lives Matter proposal, but since Director Clark did, I don't need to jump into that, so I was very excited that that passed, as it should. I also met with the Group 442. I always love meeting with student groups, and so to me, it's just really important to connect with students. So, when groups ask for me to meet with them, I'm always happy to meet with them. And for the last two weeks, I've met with Ms. Larmy about the superintendent search update, as I, as we're getting updated about what's going on with our company that's doing our superintendent search. So, I feel like I'm kind of in the know about some things, and I'm able to ask some questions. So, to me, that's been great. Upcoming meetings, I'm really concerned about some of our LGBTQ students, based on some of the things that I'm hearing, and some of the book removal things that we've been hearing. So, I emailed all the GSA and SAGA advisors and said, "Hey, I would love to come check in and talk to your students about anything." I sometimes feel like the, our LGBTQ students are kind of left out, or they're not checked in on. I've gone to Kentwood a couple of times, and met with the GSA there just to check in, and I reported on the other meetings. And so, many advisors were like, "Yes, love it, please come." So, I have meetings scheduled at Meridian, at Kent Ridge, at Matson, at Mill Creek, up all in the next three to four weeks. On our agenda was South King County Discipline Coalition next week. I hope that's still happening. I'm very excited if it is. I'm looking forward to that, always look forward to those meetings. And I am, next Friday, going with Ms. Vella to visit schools, because it's my, midwinter break starts Friday, ends Tuesday. I have a short midwinter break, so that Friday, I'm very excited to go visit schools. I mean, I have, I have a lot to say, and mostly just because, like, I'm a human, and I have opinions, and I sit here and hear things. And I know that we all come to situations with our own lenses and our own biases, and my work is always gonna gear towards supporting students. I really appreciated the student who came and spoke. I really appreciated them doing that. I know it's probably scary to do that, and I think it's great for students to kind of speak out. Ultimately, like, we need to hear student voice. I will always advocate for my views and to support students. That might be biased, or that might be personal, but we all bring our lenses in to do the work that we do. I have a lot to say about sex ed, because I'm a health teacher, but I'm not gonna talk about that now, but at some point, I think we need to talk about... But at some point, I think we need to talk about, you know, we have referendum ninety that passed, and we have to talk about comprehensive sex ed, and how we're gonna implement that in the district. And regardless of people's views or opinions on that, like, it needs to be inclusive, it needs to include all people, it needs to be age-appropriate. I think some of the comments that were submitted were for shock value, and I've been teaching sex ed for twenty years, nothing shocks me anymore. And also, like, thinking about, like, the students, students have a lot to say, and sometimes, they don't shock me as much as they used to when I first started teaching. But I think it's just important to kind of recognize that students are hearing, seeing, and experiencing things, and that I will never support bans, censorship, or removal of books. I think that students' minds need to be open, and they, they don't like something, they don't like a book in the library, they can put it down and choose not to read it. I just don't think we should ever prevent people from reading things. Like, books are always gonna be available for people, and I think that reading lets us open our minds to other things, and that we shouldn't focus on shock value, that, I think that's all I have to say about that today. But I'm looking forward to meeting with student groups, I really am. I always enjoy working with students, obviously, that's my job as a teacher, and I'm really looking forward to meeting some more students from around the district. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Vice President. My goodness, it's 10:16. Thanks, guys, for being here. Our board has been really moving and doing a lot of, getting a lot accomplished. On January 29th, as you probably are aware, we had our first, this year, board retreat for some of our new board members, the very first one. And the morning was filled with discussing how we move forward with reporting our finances, with, which Mr. Rarey kind of laid that out tonight again so nicely, and so that everybody, every board director would feel comfortable on how it was presented, every, you know, they got to say, have their say of what they wanted to see. So they were heard. After going over all that, we went into another part of our important board work, and it's a policy work, and getting back into a cadence where every month, we're working on so many policies. As you can see, a lot of people brought up policies tonight, and they are important things. There are some times where everything is not going to be ironclad spelled out in a policy, but they are important guidelines, and as a district, we have put our own spin on several of these. So we want to get back and get going on those, and getting so many of them more looked at and updated. The afternoon was filled with work on the superintendent's search firm, and Dr. Stephen Louder, who is kind of gearing up for this and taking this on for McPherson and Jacobs, he is our search firm liaison, as you want to say. And because of the result of that, February 2nd, our actual post to hire for this position went live on McPherson and Jacobs, that's their website, and also a really detailed report put together by our communication director on the Kent School District website, where there's lots of information there for all our community to see. And that's just moving right along. And we discussed the timeline and importance of our community having a voice. As a result of that, stakeholder meetings are being, beginning to come to fruition, and from February 14th to 18th, there are nine different sessions so far in the works and planning going forward. That's quite a bit of work, in, in a couple of weeks' time. In addition to that, our head, our headhunters, our, our search firm, mentioned in a report that headhunters had contacted them with eight candidates to date who wished to apply. So even though this was on a short timeframe, we're moving right along. And that's my goal, is to keep this cadenced up and keep getting it done. On February 2nd, we had a great workshop with educators of color, they were extremely well-prepared, and I learned something every time I meet with them. And of course, one of the things that came up again and again, and I want to talk more about this, even maybe have some work sessions, that how, how we need, in our schools, we need to develop our own pipeline of our students to come back to KM. And they teach. I mean, I know it's not the most popular thing to do right now, and it's a tough profession right now to be a teacher, but let's get our own kids excited about this, and let's help them, maybe even as, as low as middle school, start some kind of a program working its way, so they have a career path, that they can go out and be reflective of the kids here in this district, because they are kids of all races, creeds, and colors, and come back to your district that you know and love, and teach here. I think that's a great way to fill up some of these vacancies. And I was extremely happy. At our work session, we didn't wait for the board, board meeting tonight. We passed Black Lives Matters, and all five of us, all five of us had a voice in that, and we did it that work session, and it's in place. And even more important than that, we have to not only look at that, and that resolution, but we have to act upon it. Today, I got a very disturbing call from a young mother of a nine-year-old, and we're gonna get that straightened around. But we need, those need not to be words on a piece of paper, they need to be followed through with actions. And tonight, on 7.3, I was kind of a bulldog on our kids that I meet with, and I really listen to kids, I love kids, and our Civil Rights Club, they really wanted to be heard with some of the things. Maybe we couldn't give them everything they wanted, but we did give them a voice, and we did go through a lot of their questions, and it was very well-done tonight, and I extremely appreciate my, your patience with all the questions we had, and my questions, because if anything I'm gonna do on this board, I'm gonna be a voice for our community, and that community includes our students. They are our customers. And tonight, or tomorrow, Thursday, and Friday, I will be traveling to Olympia for a special WASTA leadership training of nineteen people in the state of Washington. I was selected to go to that, and looking forward to two days of pretty concentrated learning. And I will be traveling up there tomorrow. And I want to end with a huge thank you to our voters, and believe me, I've worked on a lot of propositions, levies, and, and candidates. That, that levy is gonna pass, and it, it didn't have a huge margin, but it had a good enough margin for South King County, because I know a lot of our people in this area are hurting. And those taxes, even if you rent, tho, those taxes are gonna be reflected in how much more your rent's gonna go up. But the people stood behind it, and they value our kids. In February of 2021, we, this is February of 2021 at a board meeting, we reviewed the members of the Instructional Materials Committee, and that, those members of that board, that night, were passed five to zero. There are nineteen people on that I Instructional Materials Committee, and we followed that, and we're gonna follow that. And, you know, what I do want to say, and I don't want to go into all this, because this hasn't even really honestly become before the board to discuss this, so it's premature, premature for me to even really discuss all the issues on this, but I do want to say that we have great policies, but not everything fits into, every peg doesn't fit into every round or square hole. And we also have to keep in mind why we are here. And we are here, and we are doing our work every day because of the kids in our district, and we cannot lose sight of that, the kids in our district. And this policy might reflect that a lot more than a lot of people realize. And this leads me to the conclusion that I want to say and bring to all of you tonight on, on Black History Month, and it's a quote from Martin Luther King, and he said, "Whatever affects one directly affects all indirectly." So I want to leave you with that thought tonight, and it is 10:24, and we are officially adjourned.